Good morning. Welcome to the November 21st Carroll County Commissioners Open Session. And Commissioner Vigliotti is joining us virtually. And I don't know if you want to say anything about it. It's not because he's at a casino someplace. He's not recreating, but he's joining us. And as always, we're ready to do pledge allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a 50/50 shot, but I think we start with you, Commissioner Garen.
I think so. I think so. Good morning, Carroll County. Just a couple of quick things. First of all, on the issue of MPRP, and this is probably going to be brought up, I want to thank the county attorney's office. I want to thank county attorney, state's attorney, Haven Schumaker. He just put out some guidance last couple of days, and it's gotten a lot of news locally, and I think even nationally, it's gotten some attention. I want to appreciate him for doing that. And, you know, it's interesting, personal property, whether that's, you know, what you make for a living, or your land, I mean, it really is, forms the foundation, the bedrock of what our country is built upon. So the very notion that somebody can come in and take what you have, I don't know how we got to that point. It's a deterioration of that incredible principle that we have, that very, very unique American principle. But I couldn't have been more thrilled to see that he put some guidance out for people, to remind people that, yes, it is your property, put up some no trespassing signs, if somebody's on it that shouldn't be on it, ask them what they're doing, confront them, don't be aggressive. If they don't leave, call the sheriff's department. Very simple. But I was just thrilled to see him put out that guidance, so I want to thank him for that. And then secondly, it's been announced a couple of times, but we'll be meeting with the delegation, the Carroll County delegation, this afternoon to talk about some legislation that we're putting forth. The entire delegation, I think, is planning on being there. That's your members of the House of Delegates and your state senators. The county has a couple of issues we want to get on the books there in terms of procurement and permitting, but I have introduced some legislation, and I appreciate I've had the full support of the board up here, to expand Sunday deer hunting in Carroll County. There'll be more to follow if anybody wants to tune in this afternoon and read about what happened, they can. We'll ask the delegation to go to Annapolis and get that passed. But the bottom line is, Sunday hunting occurs on private property in 18 counties in Maryland. There's 23 counties in Maryland and then Baltimore City. So this request is not unusual. There are 18 counties that allow Sunday hunting in Maryland, and of those 18, five of them actually allow Sunday hunting on private land for every single Sunday of the deer hunting season. I happen to be a hunter, but we have a lot of hunters in Carroll County. And people who have been in Carroll County long enough know, it is a very strong tradition within Carroll County. Because we are a farming county, a rural county, that also means you have a lot of deer. Now, they don't all just stay in Carroll County, but I think it's the place they like to hang out the most, because we've got just so much cropland. So I wanted to make people aware of that. More to follow. If you're part of the hunting community, or an avid hunter, or somebody that supports hunting, you'll have an opportunity to let the delegation know how you feel before the General Assembly begins early next year. But I just wanted people to be aware that that's something that I have asked to put forward, and I've had the, I'm very appreciative of the support of the board as well, to put this forward, and we'll see what happens and hope for the best. And that precedent, which does exist for this, guides the General Assembly to go ahead and let avid hunters have some extra time hunting on Sundays here in Carroll County, because that people work, and they don't really have an opportunity to get out there like people think they do. So if we can allow them just an extra day, extra couple of days a year, I know they'll appreciate it. And that's all for me. Thank you.
Commissioner Garen.
Thank you. Good morning, Carroll County. First off, just wanted to mention that Tuesday, for those that have any interest in history, 161 years ago, Abraham Lincoln gave the Gettysburg Address and dedicated the cemetery in Gettysburg. Very significant for a variety of reasons, but just very briefly, not only did we define the Civil War with that, but also honored the fallen, also referenced the Declaration of Independence and talked about a new birth of freedom. Attendees at that speech included, but some, but not totally, but it also included odd fellows, masons, and citizens, which included women from various states. So we had a very wide array of individuals in attendance at that event. And then, Chris, if you could bring up the other, the other image real quick. Let's see if he's got it. There is a copy of the procession at the cemetery, and some of the text from that. Just wanted to mention that very briefly. It's been a very busy week, as it always is for all of us. On Tuesday, I attended Planning and Zoning, as well as the Veterans Advisory Council in the afternoon. Lot of good conversation in both those meetings, a lot of questions with Planning and Zoning, talking about master plan. There were some master plan discussions that obviously become, coming up before the board, with some other additional conversation about the industrial, commercial zoning we have, and some concerns about how we're going to look deeper into that and how that affects our budget. I think it's actually perfect timing, given that we're looking at the master plan as we are going along right now. VAC meeting, as always, was a good conversation, discussions about some of the things for Veterans Day, and some of the different events that various members and individuals attended, as well as some other future ideas of how veterans can be better served in Carroll County. Yesterday, I attended the open house for Cummings and Company railtors on West Main Street in Westminster. That is the building, if anybody's familiar with it, was the old J.C. Penney's building that then was temporarily, for a number of years, the city administrative building, and is diagonal across from the new city administrative building, where they are in the building that used to be Truist Bank. So right there on the corner of Main and Bond. It's impressive what they've accomplished with that building. They've redesigned significantly the interior of that. And then last night, I attended the library, the Carroll County Public Library Board meeting. That was a very insightful meeting. They gave us some information regarding their annual report, as well as their plans to move forward with a strategic plan in the very near future. And I'm sure we're going to be seeing some additional details in front of the Board of Carroll County Commissioners, just to include us in the knowledge of that process. And that's all for me. Thank you.
Commissioner Vigliotti.
Thank you, Commissioner Garen. I'll just be very brief this morning, because I'll have some more to talk about later in the agenda. But just to apologize for not being able to be there in person today due to illness, and I'm grateful to be able to participate in this fashion. So, thank you.
And I've got to mention, even with an illness, you look very well dressed and your hair's neat. So thank you for joining us.
What, you expect to see a nightcap on him or something? So, you know, what's interesting is, I find, the diversity amongst us, myself, my colleagues, but also, in the same way we're diverse, a lot of the same messages, like Commissioner Garen shared, emphasizing, reemphasizing, continuing to share our commitment about MPRP, and our disdain for the process, and appreciation for the state's attorney's office to emphasize the laws that are in place. And we're not going to stop. I am committed, along with my colleagues, that we will not stop until we ensure that the message that we want to get out gets out. Will it change the way things are happening? Well, we'll see. But I think we are all committed to the same end result, and that is, let Carroll County run Carroll County. Let Carroll Countyans be Carroll County. So I did appreciate hearing that upfront. I had a town hall on Monday, and as I do, I do one in the morning and then one in the evening. There's probably three dozen or more at both morning and evening. I thought by the fire alarm going off in the evening that nobody was going to come back, but let's just say fortunately, other, they did come back, and we were able to have conversations. A lot of conversations about what's happening in the lower part of Carroll County, down in Eldersburg, Sykesville. A lot of conversation about what's going on Liberty Road, Highway 26. Fortunately, I was, you could take those off, Chris. Fortunately, I had the staff necessary with me. We have an awesome staff. We are going through the master plan process. We are always looking for input. When I think we say transparent, we really mean transparent, and we want input and insight from the community. So all the notes that were shared from the community were pen to paper, and we were captured, and we're going to use. So really appreciate the community coming out on Monday. Last week, I was not here. I attended the Mago Millan Association Counties Board meeting in Annapolis, where we had the opportunity to talk about our legislative priorities, along with the impacts of blueprint. So we heard from the AIB, I think it was, right? Is that Kenny? Kenny? Is it AIB? Who'd I listen to? Rachel? What's?
Yeah, she's, she's on the committee that enforces blueprint.
Yeah.
Yes, yes. Sorry. I was reading my notes, not paying.
No, no, I apologize.
I'm on the edge of my seat when you talk, but I'm sorry.
No, no, she, she shared what the state is thinking when it comes to blueprint, and it's still not what we're thinking here in Carroll County. Again, I don't want to be penalized in Carroll County for the intent to support the entire state. I want to support this state, but we don't, and should not be penalized. So we're continuously having those conversations.
And I understand you asked her some hard questions.
I asked her some hard questions, and afterward, she said, "I appreciate you sharing these." I said, "Well, I'm not going to back down. I mean, it's an opportunity." The Thanksgiving is coming up next week, so wishing everybody a very happy Thanksgiving with family and friends. Reeds Across America is December 14th, which is Saturday, starting at 12:00. Across the county, we just received notice that Longview Cemetery in Eldersburg will participate. There are 1,100 veterans interred in Longview. will participate. There are 1,100 veterans interred in Longview, in Eldersburg. So, I'll be participating there. I think that's the largest in the county, as far as those veterans being interred in one place. We take it seriously, again, in Carroll County, to recognize and pay tribute and memorialize our veteran community during Rees Across America. Really shout out to Babylon Vault in putting all this together. The last thing I just want to share is, between now, through Thanksgiving, through Rees Across America, through the holiday season, it's six weeks of just go, go, go with the holidays. And it could be a challenge. You know, we should recognize and appreciate and be with family and friends, but it's also a challenge when it comes to behavioral and mental health. And we should watch out for each other, watch out for ourselves, but our family and our friends. And don't let behavioral health and mental health and issues surrounding it be a stigma to getting help. So, if you need it, get it. You know, 988 is always the free number to call, and it's there for us. So, just continue to remind ourselves and others, it's okay. And work with them, and recognize that it's not a stigma to staying healthy and moving ourselves into the new year. But to think we're going into December is crazy, but that's kind of where we're at today. So, with that, back over you.
Thank you. Commissioner Garen alluded to it a little bit, and I just want to mention, last Wednesday, we did have the PSEG meeting at Ag Center, very well attended, and people spoke very well, and occasionally got a little hot with them, but I don't blame them. They didn't allow everybody to speak, and they, I think they're realizing that in Carroll County, we value property rights, and they don't so much. We had a solar hearing that evening, too, and I liked bashing our Public Service Commission, Public Service Commission, and their decisions. And I've said a couple times, these hearings, the judges are great. They've really do a good hearing, and take a lot of notes, ask a lot of questions. It's very thorough. And what we're seeing is, some of these hearings are now being backed up, or they're adding a hearing. So, again, I just want to encourage everyone, the Public Service Commission, the PSEG, they hear us. And they might not do everything we want them to do, but they hear us. Don't stop talking to them. I'll briefly talk about family. We had my wife's birthday Saturday, no, my wife's birthday Sunday, my granddaughter's birthday Saturday. But Friday, and some of you may know this, my wife had a minor accident at her house, and we ended up going to an emergency facility. And I just want, the only thing I want to mention about it, I was here in Westminster doing stuff, but it was 100% still my fault. So, everything that happened. So, I guess that's normal. But we did that stuff over the weekend, birthday parties and other things. And then, on Monday, we went to Denver to see two of the granddaughters, and a fifth grade play. And Rhonda's still there. She got to see a basketball game last night and another play. And it's awesome to see all them. And I just got a call before our meetings this morning, which is awesome. And I fully understand. I think my wife, not that anybody else isn't, is somewhat anxious on having the whole family over on Thanksgiving, and she's not home to prepare. Well, I got a call, they want to keep her another day. And I said, "Change your plane ticket. Just, you know, you can keep her another week if you want." It's so nice. Well, I'm not, that didn't sound good. It's so nice seeing your kids and your grandkids. And we have North Carolina, Denver, and Carroll County, but they're spread out. But it's nice to see that they want her to stay longer. Let me say it that way. Oh, my gosh.
Been nice serving with you.
Exactly. Yes, I swear. But, and then, on last personal note here, on December 3rd, I'm apparently going to be dunked into ice water, because I'm not doing a very good job fundraising for Boys and Girls Club. I think there's seven teams. We talked about it last night at Carroll Community College. They have a person going against a McDaniel College person. So, there's several teams. Boys and Girls Club is a Carroll County, such an awesome group. All the money goes to them. So, and what I told them last night, if you'd like me not to be in freezing cold out in the alley, donate in my name. If you'd like to see me dunked in ice water, donate to my opponent's name. Either way, it goes to the Boys and Girls Club, a very, very good cause. Last night was Carroll Community College trustees meeting, always an awesome meeting. And they went into a lot of the things they have going on. And it's, it's interesting how much they've done since the last meeting, and everything that's being planned before the next meeting. And also, with that, Dr. Mintz will be inaugurated tomorrow as the fourth president. And she's great, and it's going to be, Dr. Ball was great, and it's going to be, continue as always. What amazes me, she's the fourth president there. They've had long-term presidents who have served them well, and I'm sure she will, too. But it just, it amazes me every time I think about that she's only the fourth president out there. Our delegation has their public meeting tonight in this building, down in the Reagan Room. We will have some things that we're going to request of them, but it's their meeting, they're using our room. So, please come if you have anything you want to say to the delegation. And I mentioned Thanksgiving. Thanksgiving's coming. You won't see us next Thursday, because we'll all be with family. But it's coming. And as Commissioner Rostine said, all the holidays are coming. Please be safe with all the travel. He mentioned Rees Across America, which is a giant program. But thanks to Babylon Vault and those people, it's a giant program in Carroll County. I've been involved at Emmanuel Lutheran Church every year that it's happened. And it's just been great. I think this year, they have 47 cemeteries that are going to do it. And the only other thing I wanted to mention is, you can go online and donate Rees. I mean, they spend a lot of money on this, and you can get involved and don't, I think it's $17 to sponsor.
It's like 14 or 17?
Something like that. So, it's a very good program. And anything else for priority, Carol?
I just wanted to mention one thing really quickly. Wanted to send out condolences to the Kramer family of Westminster. Marilyn Kramer, which is retired Army Colonel Edward Kramer's wife, had passed away recently. So, just wanted to make mention of that. And that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, guys. Next item, approval to submit computer labs program grant application and accept the award. And we need to hold Commissioner Rostine back making the motion, because it is $0 of the county.
I know.
But we still need to listen to him, okay?
I suppose.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
As you said, we're here today seeking approval to apply and accept the award for a grant for computer labs programs. And that's going to be an expansion, or improvement, or addition of existing computer labs. I'm joined today with Mark Ripper, our Director of Technology Services, and also with Heather Powell, our Director of, Manager of Workforce Development with the county. The idea of this funding is that the computer lab grant program will allow us, and any local nonprofits, to create and expand and upgrade computer equipment, including adaptive technology and software. The program aligns with the Office of Statewide Broadband's goal of improving and increasing digital access for vulnerable populations. And the computer labs must serve specific populations under this funding, which would include, could include, and would include veterans, individuals with disabilities, persons experiencing homelessness, and those returning from incarceration. The county is requesting, we're going together for a collaborative application that will touch on workforce, as well as our senior center computer labs. We're going for a collaborative application for $65,000 to provide upgraded computer labs at Carroll County Workforce Development, as well as our senior centers in all five centers. The total amount will be 65,000. And as you noted, Commissioner Kyler, there would be no county match required, which is always a positive when we're looking at funding opportunities.
Well, why 65,000? Where did that number come from?
That's the cap that could be allowed. So, if there was additional funding available, we could certainly use some additional funding as well, but that's the cap for the grant.
And where's it coming from within the state?
Department of Housing and Community Development.
So, we estimate it'll purchase between 40 and 45 systems for them.
Yeah. Okay. And you have a plan of 40 to 45 systems, where they're going to be spread out?
Sure. And I think we can speak to that specifically, Gina, if you wanted to speak to what we're looking at at the senior centers. And just a very brief overview of how we have computers at our centers now, and the labs that we have.
I was just figuring which questions to ask, to ensure that Gina would get up here and speak.
Thank you very much.
I'm here for you.
So, throughout all the five of our senior community centers, we have a total of 40 computers. Some of them, if not many of them, run very slow. And so, if we could, this would enable us to maybe replace half of them or more, which would be fantastic, so that the computers run faster for our individuals who attend the senior centers. Also, looking at possibility of a few additional printers, to replace the ones that are already in the centers. And so, we're also envisioning that with computers that would run faster, that we would have some computer classes for our senior center attendees, as well as some financial exploitation seminars, possibly with the state's Attorney's Office, to protect our older adults. And so, of course, the senior centers are a perfect place. And of course, as you all know, we serve veterans as well, and individuals who are homeless. So, if that enters your questions.
I appreciate you definitely hitting some of the very significant issues we have, like exploitation of our seniors, which is an ongoing threat, and continuing to be an ongoing threat. So, appreciate that.
And then, I'd like for Heather also to touch base for the workforce development side, and their computer labs, and the impact that would have.
So, we have approximately 22 computers that are for public use. This grant aligns very well with the WIWA funding grant. There, it addresses all our priority areas of the people that we serve, under that grant, anyway. So, people coming into workforce development are taking career assessments that look at their interests and aptitudes. They are doing online job applications, which you don't do paper applications anymore, online interviewing. So, upgraded computers are really important. The last time our labs were purchased, the last time we purchased new computers, was when we were part of the Mid-Maryland Workforce Association. So, that, I would say they're 10 years old. ITS has been very good about rebuilding, upgrading, but they're due for an upgrade, and this is a great opportunity to do that. We do not have that funding available in our current WIWA budget to replace all those.
Cool.
I move the Board of Commissioners approve the submission of the FY25 Computer Labs Grant Application and Accept the Award.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And I somewhat joke about the county contribution, but it seems like almost every week, we're either approving an application for a grant, or the acceptance of a grant, or both. And it's just awesome. The, I don't think a lot of the people realize how many grants, and how much total money that people in this building fight for. And it's not easy. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Cisco SmartNet support a contract renewal.
Good morning.
The Office of Procurement in cooperation with the Department of Technology Services requests your approval to renew the contract for Cisco SmartNet support with E Plus Technology Incorporated, in the amount of $124,369.29. This purchase is being made through a Maryland contract, and the amount is approved in the fiscal year 25 budget.
Good morning, Commissioners. Basically, we have about 200 network switches and routers that communicate all of the data between the various locations in the county. The SmartNet contract provides 24/7 support, should any of those routers or switches not work, plus all of the upgrades that are, of course, required nowadays because of cybersecurity issues, and that type of thing. So, any questions? I'd be happy to answer them. Or I have Sixton here, who is the expert in it. He can answer them.
When you say throughout the county, it's.
All the parks, facilities, senior centers.
And Carroll County Public Schools?
No, no, just for Carroll, this is just for Carroll County Government.
This is just for Carroll County Government.
And one location may have multiple devices. So, it's not just one device per location.
And we have equipment in just over 40 locations.
Wow.
I move the Board of Commissioners renew the contract with Cisco SmartNet support with E Plus Technology, Inc., for the amount of $124,369.29.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Contract renewal, personal caregivers.
The Office of Procurement in cooperation with the Bureau of Aging and Disabilities requests your approval to renew the contract for personal caregivers with Right at Home in the amount not to exceed $117,200. This renewal is being made through a term contract that was awarded to Right at Home that was competitively bid. This amount is approved in the fiscal year 25 budget.
And the contract is for senior care program. Right at Home is one of the providers for the program, to provide personal care and tour service, which is light housekeeping to our clients that are enrolled in the program.
And with the term contracts, some of them are sole source, some of them are, it's one term contract, some of them it's multiple term contracts, and you ask each entity if they want to look at a certain thing. Which one is this?
So, essentially what this is, we have the term contract with Right at Home for this particular service. What we're really looking to do, rather than just pay the invoices on the term contract, we're going to encumber the money. So, write it as a PO. It's still going to be the term contract. That way, budget has more traceability, because they don't have the ability to really see the term contract payments. So, it makes it to where the budget process is more transparent, and everything is traceable.
Is this paying for this individual, this contract?
Yeah. Well, they've got the contract, and they just invoice us. In years past, what has happened is, agencies would submit their payment, and if they listed it under just the term contract, that doesn't go through budget. So, this, the contract's still saying the same. This is just, this is how much money we're anticipating it costing for the remainder of the year. So, we'll be coming before y'all, many times, with things similar to this, with term contracts that we want to encumber the funds, just for that visibility.
But this isn't for one person.
It's not one person.
It's a service, a personal care service provided to clients that, and so, Right at Home is a company that provides, you know, in-home personal care services for those that. that need it through Citizen Services. So it's not one individual.
Is this through the senior centers or beyond that?
No, this is, Senior Care is one of our programs within the Bureau of Aging and Disabilities. It's a state-funded program, 100% state-funded. We have 55 clients enrolled in the program, and there's three personal care agencies or residential service agencies that we contract with for the services of the program.
But this is county dollars. It's a state program, but do we receive county dollars for this program?
State-funded.
No, it's state-funded.
This is state-funded.
These are state dollars.
Oh, this, oh, that's even better, okay. And this goes through FY25?
Yes.
So through June 30th, okay.
And then we'll be back to ask the same question again for the following year. Just for the encumbrance is really what it is.
Got it, okay. I'll move the Board of Commissioners renew the contract for personal caregivers with Right at Home in the amount not to exceed $117,200.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, thank you. Now then, contract renewal for home-delivered meals.
The Office of Procurement in cooperation with the Bureau of Aging and Disabilities requests your approval to renew the contract for home-delivered meals with Meals on Wheels of Central Maryland Incorporated in the amount not to exceed $200,000. This renewal is being made through a term contract awarded to Meals on Wheels of Central Maryland Incorporated that was competitively bid. This amount is approved in the fiscal year '25 budget.
And these are federal dollars from the Older Americans Act for the Title III C2 Program, which is home-delivered meals, and Meals on Wheels is, again, the contracted provider, if you provide the concurrence.
Is there real competition to Meals on Wheels? I mean, that's all I hear is Meals on Wheels. Are there other vendors out there?
There was other vendors that bid on this. When, before Maureen retired, this was one of the ones that she had worked on, and there was multiple bids.
Okay. I just keep hearing Meals on Wheels.
They're definitely the big one.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's other, Mom's Meals is another home-delivered meal company, and we've also discovered ways that we can also provide home-delivered meals by working with local restaurants, but for the larger program, the home-delivered meals are done through Meals on Wheels.
And just in rough magnitude, what does Meals on Wheels, how many households does this provide to?
So on, on average, per month, in fiscal year '24, there was an average of 50 people a month.
Five zero?
Five zero, 50, sorry. But with a total, and their, individuals can choose from a breakfast menu and a lunch menu, and in fiscal year '24, there were over 24,000 meals that were provided through the program.
24,000 in Carroll County, and I'm sure you have that broken down by demographic, location, all that kind of fun stuff.
Yes.
Is this enough?
It's never enough. No, there's never enough money. The, the monies that we receive for the home-delivered meal program, again contracted by Meals on Wheels, I mean, it definitely provides food security to our most vulnerable individuals in the, in the county. There used to be a requirement that people had to be homebound. That is no longer a requirement under the Older Americans Act, but what I'm getting at is that if we had more money, we would be able to reach more people, but also supported by supporting local restaurants. When we did our hometown takeout program that we, that Rich actually had shared information with you all about in a previous session, it was so widely received, and some of the restaurants had even commented to us that, that we came to them at the perfect time, because it was their, it was a slow time for them, and we, you know, really were able to support their businesses. So if we had more monies, we could reach people in different ways.
Yeah, I guess that would be the, the homework is, okay, how much more and what would that cost be? Make that part of the ask. You said this is federal dollars. Are there state dollars that also support this program that we can go after, or, you know, would this be county, you know, a county ask? Do you know?
So there are some state dollars, Rich, do you want to? Going to put him on the spot. We have something called NSIP dollars, we have state nutrition.
You can pull a fire alarm, go ahead, Rich. That's an inside one, so.
So, good morning. Yes, there is a portion of the program that is carved out where we will apply state dollars to it. It's typically around 10% of the program, anywhere between 10% and 12% of the program will actually, will utilize state funding for it. And I, the other thing, you know, you had asked about whether or not this is enough money, and the, was, there was a 28% increase in meals between FY23 and FY24. So there's a, definitely, we're seeing an increase in need across the county. We made, you know, you mentioned Meals on Wheels and that we, they seem to be the only game in town. I will say that they worked very well with us in, in the early part of this calendar year to help us do some reach out, reaching out to various people in the county to let them know that the service existed. And I don't know, I don't have the ability to quantify if that increase is directly related to that, but certainly we have seen more people try to utilize the program and the services provided by Meals on Wheels. So hopefully it's not an indicator that food insecurity is going up, but certainly something to watch.
Yeah, no, I appreciate, 28% is, is very large. Hope is not the course of action. Getting the data is, and then knowing where those folks lie, you know, or are, that are in a food insecurity place in their lives, helps us then either go after more money or be, you know, stronger advocates for you, whatever it may take. But, I mean, this is a lot of money. We're doing really well, but, you know, that's why, I often ask when somebody says, here's a lot of money, I'm like, okay, put it in perspective. Is it a lot to the problem we're trying to solve? If the problem we're trying to solve has increased 28%, then it's not, you know, and we need to go after more opportunities, because that, that's a large number, you know. You know, especially when you said 24,000 meals were delivered, 28%, you know, is pretty significant from that 24,000. So hopefully that makes a bit of sense, and we can do some, some homework on, okay, instead of the 200,000, the number should be 240,000 or 200, whatever it may be, so. And then if we can get it federally, that's great. If not, how do we get it either through the state or the county? If this is a program, like Ted would share, every program's a great program, which ones are we willing to fund? But if this is a program that keeps food security, to me, it's a very important program, you know, for quality of life in Carroll County. Wow, okay. Does that make sense? I mean, am I, okay. I appreciate it. You know, with that said, I absolutely support this, that the Board of Commissioners renew the contract for home-delivered meals and Meals on Wheels of Central Maryland Incorporated in the amount not to exceed $200,000.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Now we're going to talk about meals at the senior centers.
The Office of Procurement in cooperation with the Bureau of Aging and Disabilities requests your approval to renew the contract for congregate meals with Business Food Solution, Incorporated in the amount not to exceed $200,000. This renewal is being made through a term contract awarded to Business Food Solution, Incorporated that was competitively bid. This amount is approved in the fiscal year '25 budget.
And again, federal dollars. Business Food Solutions has been the contracted provider for a number of years of they, as they've been on the contract. The meals are provided at all five of the senior community centers daily. In fiscal year '24, the senior centers served over 31,000 meals and reaching 1,440 unduplicated individuals.
I move the Board of Commissioners renew the contract for congregate meals with Business Food Solutions, Inc. in the amount not to exceed 200,000.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or further discussion?
The only question is, do you ever turn people away when it comes to meals at the senior centers?
No. Even, and Rich could speak to this as well, like even if somebody hadn't signed up for a meal and they come to a center, and this may happen more at Westminster than any of the other centers.
Sure.
Our staff will find something for somebody to eat, so we don't turn people away.
That's a great answer, I appreciate that.
They sign up, most, most sign up pretty well?
They do.
Yeah.
They do, they're, the members are very accustomed to the procedures and needing to sign up ahead of time, and also know that if they, for some reason, can't come, that they need to cancel. So, but yeah, people are pretty good about that.
Okay, thanks.
Any more questions?
And that, and that also, on the topic of not turning people away, that also includes people that may not even be Carroll County residents, from what I understand.
Absolutely, it's federal funding. Absolutely, it's federal funding, so individuals do not have to be a Carroll County resident, they just have to meet the criteria of being 60 or older, or between the ages of 50 and 59 with a disability, with a documented disability.
You didn't have to look over here when you said 60 or over, but that's right.
I did nothing of the sort.
I, you did.
Thanks.
She did point and whistle, though.
Well, she was looking, she was looking at me, but I'm not quite there. Almost.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now a discussion item, no, no, it is a, this is a, a decision item. Approval to submit youth homelessness system improvement. And, and accept it.
So, good morning again. Celine Steckel, Director of Citizen Services, I'm joined this morning with Carly Long, who is our Homeless Management Information System Coordinator, but she is also helping administratively with our Youth Action Board. And so we are here, as you said, this morning, to request approval to submit our Youth Homelessness System Improvement Youth Action Board Development Grant and accept the award. This was a, was a funding opportunity that was pushed out, that we want to take advantage of. This, the Carroll County Youth Action Board, as you all know, was established in 2023, and the current group of youth have been regularly convening since May of 2024. This funding would be able to be used to continue to support our Youth Action Board activities. Currently receiving some one-time through the Youth Reach and FY25 CPA supplement, we are helping to support that now, but that funding will be ending. So this funding, which goes through 2026, would be essential to help support the Youth Action Board operations. Youth hold their own meetings and attend Circle of Caring Executive Board meetings and provide input. They also, part of this process is that we provide stipend payments, which is a recognized best practice for the youth that are leading that Youth Action Board. And so we find that this has been able to support them in many ways and give them that extra leg up that perhaps other, other youth have with, you know, with, that are in different stability situations. So this, this will also support operations to help cover some of the outreach activities that our Youth Action Board is doing. They have done multiple outreach events, including National Night Out, the National Homelessness Awareness Month, and then they're also doing the upcoming Miracle on Main Street, where they're doing their personal hygiene drive for youth. So that's just an example of some of the things this will help us support. Again, this is a $15,000 grant. There's no county match required. This is pushed out through the Department of Housing and Community Development, and we would just ask that, you know, we were, are just making this ask so that our folks are, are supported. Carly, did you have anything to add about the Youth Action Board?
No, I think you covered it well.
Okay.
I move the Board of Commissioners approve the submission of the YHSIWAB Development Grant and accept the award.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further questions or discussion?
Just say thank you. For continued effort with the Circle of Caring and the Youth Action Board and all that you're doing. I mean, it really takes a team coming together, because not one person has an answer, and that's, that's proven itself, so appreciate all the work.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
That's so close.
You just assume we're going to vote for it.
You're at the room, right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, Department of Homeland Security Grant Awards.
That's like when the baseball pitcher throws, throws the pitch, it doesn't even wait for the call.
That's right.
Marches off the mound, that's what Celine thinks.
Where the hitter hits a homerun and dinger, and it's like, okay, just stand there for a minute.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
I will do my best.
She was better yesterday.
Jacob's here to back me up, we're okay.
You have a backup there.
We do, we do. So we're here this morning to ask you to accept our annual Department of Homeland Security Grant Awards. Assistant Emergency Manager Jacob Hill is here as well. Each year, we're provided with grant award notices, we call them GANs for short, for each of the Homeland Security Grants we received, we've received. These are pass-through funds, for the most part, to, from the federal level through the state and the Baltimore Urban Area Security Initiative down to the county. We have received the GANs for federal fiscal year 2024, that our federal, the federal fiscal year and our county fiscal year never, ever match up, so it can get a little bit confusing. But this is for federal fiscal year 2024 funding. It's for the Emergency Management Performance Grant, or EMPG, the Urban Area Security Initiative, UASI, and State Homeland Security Grant Program. So I will turn it over to Jacob. We do have the, the specifics on the second page of the briefing paper, but I'll turn it over to Jacob to provide a brief overview of what's there.
Sure, all right. Good morning, Commissioners. So for federal fiscal year '24, for the Emergency Management Performance Grant, also known as EMPG, the award amount is $96,690.58. That does have a required match, and then some of the proposed uses really are for EM staff salaries. For federal fiscal year '24, Urban Area Security Initiative, also known as UASI, is $415,051.20. There is no required match for that. Some of the proposed uses are for EM planning staff salaries, hazmat and ATR support. There is a 35% required to support law enforcement activities. And lastly, federal fiscal year '24, State Homeland Security Grant Program, also known as SHIZ, is $110,473.39. There is no required match for that as well. Some of the proposed uses are EOC support, training and exercise, and as we move into the new year, we are going to be prioritizing training and exercise a little bit more, so that would be helpful. And then interoperable comms and election security. There is also a 35% required to support law enforcement activities for this one as well.
Who determines how to support law enforcement?
It depends on, well, it depends on the grant, but it's a conversation with the Sheriff's Office for the Urban Area Security Initiative and the Regional Law Enforcement Committee. So the Baltimore Urban Area Security Initiative is the Baltimore, basically the Baltimore BMC minus Queen Anne's County. And there is a law enforcement committee that has a representative from every one of the jurisdictions represented throughout the UASI. All of those folks basically funnel up requests for projects or proposals for projects. They're vetted through that regional law enforcement committee, and then the, that, those priorities are And then the, that, those priorities are submitted to the Regional Urban Area Work Group, who takes the amount of money that is awarded to the region by the federal government and then determines how, you know, which projects will be fun, will be funded. So it's a cooperative purchase, there's multiple purchase process, there's multiple layers of coordination involved. So hopefully that answered.
Yeah, it does. It's just when the sheriff, you know, uses, the office uses the money that is gathered, do we see a breakdown? And is the breakdown, does this come into that breakdown that we see? Funding is through UASI or through something? I'm kind of looking at Roberta. I, I don't know. Because you know part of this, but there's, there's a bigger picture, you know, in the funding.
So anything that is purchased utilizing any of this funding?
Uh huh.
That, well, not every single purchase, but anything that requires commissioner concurrence comes to, comes before the board and it's, it's designated as, you know, we, we say that that's what, how we're going to pay for that purpose, purchase with that particular grant funding stream. We, every purchase that's made through any of these funding streams is done through the Emergency Management Office. The Carroll County Emergency Management is the, is responsible for managing and doing, tracking and doing all of the, all of the purchase activity. So for these funds, the Sheriff's Office, for example, doesn't spend the money directly. They work with us, we handle the procurement process, and then inventory of all the equipment or whatever when it comes in, and then it's issued out to the, to the law enforcement agencies. And that works for, you know, for municipal law enforcement agencies, for Department of Fire and EMS, any agency that we are purchasing items on behalf of, we receive the, the items and then they're distributed out for use in the field.
And then the last, the last question, so, because you kind of, also walked into it, the, the law enforcement, it's not just the Sheriff's Department, or is the Sheriff's Department and the municipalities' police departments?
The Urban Area Security Initiative for the, for the.
Do I, do I, see if I know what I'm doing here. Ah, here we go.
Sorry, it wouldn't be the first time I was lost before.
You're still, you're still there, so that's good. And then what do I do here? Oops.
Go down to the bottom. See that little, right next to the volume kind of thing? Yeah, just click that.
I don't know why this looks like it's the first time I've ever seen a PowerPoint presentation, but that's what happens when I get up here before the guys. So, good morning, Debbie Stanford, Grants Office, joined by Celine Stickle, Director of Citizen Services, for an update for the Board for your state and local fiscal recovery fund, also known as FRF, and some jurisdictions refer to it as ARPA. Again, just the overarching goals of the oversight team were to make sure that all of these projects under this grant were eligible and that we're following all the federal requirements, that all the project funds are spent or under contract by the end of this calendar year, so by the end of next month. And then whatever has gone under contract will be spent by the end of '26, because after December 31st, there is no moving of this money. So today, again, it's like I've never used it before, we will give you an overview, again, of FRF and the money that's involved. We have a couple of decisions that we're going to ask the Board to make today. We'll review the project list and then go back to those, the recommendations that we have for you. So the, the plan, the period of performance, this started in March of '21, runs through December 31st of '26. The, the grant, the federal award was $32.7 million. And to meet the goal of having this 100% spent or under contract by the end of this year, we have three items that will come to the Board for concurrence before the end of the year. One is the family shelter construction, and that is actually the next agenda item for you today. The Hampstead wastewater treatment plant project will need to come before you, and then the Melstone stormwater project. Once those three projects are under, under, been awarded and under contract, we will be, we will have all that money obligated by the end of the year. We have also earned interest on this money, a little bit unusual that the federal government allowed jurisdictions to keep interest on federal funding, and the Board elected to keep that interest in the fund. It has allowed us some flexibility in spending for things like salaries, because there are no obligation or spending deadlines. And if this, if the interest money remains unspent, that would return to the general fund. So the interest allocated is just over $2 million, and unallocated interest is 1.1.3. So just a broad overlook of the, the plan that the Board has put together, this really hasn't changed very much since we received the money. Half of your money went to broadband infrastructure in the county. About $17 million of our plan is, is invested in broadband. And we were strategic in, in how we, how we used that money, and we leveraged federal funding through the state and some ISP contributions for another $30 million. So $47 million is, is devoted to broadband infrastructure in the county as a result of this plan. The other half of the money, primarily infrastructure projects. Starting with stormwater, we did the Ag Center Project and the associated parking lot in stormwater. We've done some HVAC projects through county buildings, the shelter project, and then water projects with the municipalities and also with our own Bureau of Utilities, and that makes up the rest of the, the other half of the funding. So we have two decisions that we would like to ask the Board to consider today. The family shelter, which is the next concurrence item on your agenda today, needs additional funding to move forward. We can work, we can make that happen within the FRF funding. It is an increase of $851,422. And I'll walk through how we can make that work with FRF funding, and, and there won't be any county money needed. And then I'd like to also consider doing something different with the long driveway program, moving interest onto that program for additional flexibility. And again, we'll talk about that, but I wanted to give you kind of what I was looking for at the end, in the beginning. Don't want to bury the, bury the ask. All right. So your plan, this is a summary of the administrative requests, the allied agency requests, our collaboration with the municipalities for water supply projects, and then there was a small project for DEFEMs. There are no changes, no available funds, and no recommendations to this part of the plan. The only note that I have is that Union Bridge's water project is now complete, and we've processed the payment to the town for our portion of that project. Public Works Plan, again, no available funding to, to move and no recommendations today. As I mentioned, the Hampstead wastewater treatment plant project bid has been received. They're evaluating it, and that will need to come to the Board for concurrence in order for us to obligate the balance of the FRF funding. So IT and broadband, this one, I'm going to go project by project, because there's a lot going on, on this screen. So, and, and I'm sorry, I forgot to mention, you have a project list in your book, and I, we're a little out of order with this, but the project numbers are there if you want to follow along. So project number 22 is our fiber manager, our broadband manager, that there are no available funds or recommendation with that particular project. Project number 23, the county put out an RFP with our remaining FRF funding back in the spring, I think. Time has gone fast, so it may have been a little earlier than that. We had two proposals. We fully funded each one of those proposals. There are some funds remaining in that project. $210,789, to be exact, and our recommendation is to move that over to the family shelter project. These are FRF grant funds, and they have to be obligated to a project by the end of the year. The next project, and number 24, this is the Network Infrastructure Grant for 2022, no changes. There are no available funds and no recommendation. This is an ongoing project. The 2.5 million is matching state dollars. Project 25 is the Neighborhood Connect Grant. This was a broadband project in the Hampstead area. We have a total budget, county budget, this is again matching a state grant of 564 to 11. We extended the grant once. We are out of grant agreement now. The grant expired in June, and there are $191,770 in FRF dollars that are currently unobligated. We are continuing to work with the state and the vendor to obligate those funds before the end of the year, so I don't have any recommendations for that line item. We will keep that money in the project as long as we can get it under contract before the end of the year. Project 26, this is NIG 23. Our match, that, you know, we had budgeted match for this project, and when the grant agreements came through, it was a little less, so we've got 96, 347. Remaining to be obligated in that particular project, again, our recommendation is to move that to the family shelter, because these are FRF grant dollars. Project number 27, this is the long driveway program. We have $300,000 in FRF funding on this project. It was very popular. We had 250 of your constituents that applied for this program. However, it has been very slow-moving. So to date, we don't have a single person with an estimate in place who has decided to go forward, a single citizen. For that reason, I, I feel a little uncomfortable guaranteeing that this $300,000 in federal funds will be spent in the time that we have allotted. And I would recommend that the Board move this, move interest onto this project instead, so we can continue the project. We are not under any of the spending constraints that the federal government, or the federal funding would require, and it is a popular program and we do want to move forward with it, but we just don't have very much more information than we did in the spring when we got the award from the state.
You just pause on that. If you use interest money, you, you have less restrictions.
We have no restrictions, and if it doesn't get spent, then it comes back to the general fund. If it doesn't get spent and we leave it in the federal money, then it goes back to the federal government. One of my goals is for, to write no checks to the federal government for this money.
I, I like that goal. So, um.
So it offsets. We will put, we, we would move the federal money over to the family shelter project and put $300,000 in interest on this project, so the net change to broadband is about $300,000.
So how do we, you said it's popular, but nobody's, you know, taken up on this.
No, no.
Well, we, we advertise, we've advertised it, and we've had 250 applications.
Right.
We just haven't gotten an estimate for a driveway yet.
From the vendor.
From the vendor.
You're pushing the vendor.
So.
Yes.
It's not that people don't want it.
Right.
Correct.
Vendor's not responding.
So how do we?
As well as you'd like.
There's been much work behind the scenes on this. Even this morning, I was receiving some emails about it.
Okay.
And, and, you know, the other piece of it is that we're not going to fully necessarily fund it.
Right.
There are state dollars in, our dollars in, and then the ISP is making a contribution.
Right.
So if there is a remainder, the homeowner needs to agree to that and then agree to take the service. So it's a long process. And like I said, we're really no closer to having an idea of how fast it will be spent today than we were in the spring. I think it'll move forward, but I want to keep the federal money spending.
Yeah, no, and I, I definitely appreciate that. I, I want to hear that part about you believe or you want to keep this going forward, because I do as well.
Yes.
Because if that's what the, you know, community wants that has individual needs, let's figure out how to get there. But you're right, in the meantime, we can shift these dollars there. Like I said, I don't want to give anything back to federal government.
And I think part of the issue is, I think some of these satellite entities are requiring contracts, so it's tough for some of these homeowners. They feel like they're hanging out, and should they make a decision on something else to get less desirable internet service, or, or should they wait?
Yeah.
It, it's frustrating for them.
It is. And, and, and we, we want to serve the 250 people that have applied, and then if we have additional money, we'll open it back up. You know, we just didn't want to tell 500 people you were going to get it and, and, you know, run out of money. So we've tried to be strategic in how we've rolled this, I mean, broad, I say we, I, you know, I am just the, the, I'm herding the cats. The work is being done in your departments, and, and there are a lot of people working on this project to make sure that it moves forward for, for our citizens.
I appreciate take ownership of it. You're doing great.
Well, it's not all me. No, no, this is, this is definitely a team effort. If it were all me, we wouldn't be this far. And then the last project in broadband is the fiber connections to county facilities. This project is complete. There are no available funds, and there is no recommendation. So collectively, like, we would move 607 to the family shelter project to fill part of that gap, but the net change in your contribution to broadband is only 307, because we're going to put some interest on here.
Now, in reference to this, so you're showing the interest of $300,000, and you're also showing, showing the interest of $139,286. Now, would we be moving that out of the current interest?
You're, you're in, you're on the next page.
Yeah, sorry. My apologies.
You're good.
So can I, can I go back to the broadband issue real quick? So my understanding is, earlier this year, we, we had some concerns about the ability to get some work done in a timely fashion, and we had a series of meetings, and we, my understanding was that we worked it out, and we were good to go, and we're going to move forward. Is this the same vendor? Am I, different vendor? Okay.
No. Those two projects are projects 24 and 26, the NIG project, well, and actually 25. So 24, 25, and 26 are with the same vendor. 26, NIG 22 and NIG 23 are moving. I, you know, I think they're moving nicely. They're 46% spent on NIG 22 to date, and 6% on NIG 23, but we knew that. That's going to be secondary. Once the first project's done, then they'll start the second project. And we are still negotiating with them about number 25, because we still have some funds there that we can, we can grant to them, and they can do the work, but we need it, I need it under contract, so this is not a hope and a dream anymore, right? Like, I need to report to the federal government who I've contracted with, what their SAM.gov, you know, registration number is, and then we can't move it. So this is, we are putting this into the federal reporting system, and so I need these contracts to be solid. So that's, yeah.
Sure. Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah, and the, we are doing some work with the same vendor on the long driveway program, and some of his customers have come in, and, and we have spent a little bit of that money, but the, the primary ISP on that is, is, you know, Comcast is who we work with. Most people have Comcast in the county, and, and that's where we're still negotiating how that program's going to roll out. Okay? And I, we'll get back to your question, Commissioner Gordon, if I can just go to the next slide, because we've got a little bit of money left in that project. So this project is the Melstone Stormwater Project. There are some available funds there, 105, that will need to move somewhere. We would recommend that we move it to the family shelter. This bid will also come to you for concurrence before the end of the year.
It came in under budget, that's why.
Yeah. Came in under, we had a million budgeted, and it came in at 895, the low bid. And then here we are with the Citizen Services Plan. We have two projects in there, this, the family shelter, and then we did some behavioral health, behavioral health contracts with nonprofits, and this bid is coming to you next, and we'll need an additional 851, 422 in order to move forward. I will say, though, that a portion of this is for contingencies, and you have interest money on the family shelter project, so if the contingency money is not needed, that would come back to the general fund at the end of the day. So to address your, your question, Commissioner Gordon, so we would meet that gap for the family shelter with the broadband money that we discussed and the plan, the man, the planning and land management money from stormwater that we discussed. The interest is not going to come from the 1.3. It will come from, last spring, the Board put some interest aside for overages and capital projects. We can, we have most of that left. I think you put 455,000 aside. We've spent about 40 of it. And so we will take the interest from what is already allocated for the family shelter. Now, for long driveways, though, I would take that. Now, for Long Driveways, though, I would take that from the interest that remains. And I should have probably put this, whoops, hello, what have I done? So this is the interest that's remaining on the project. Whoops, I don't know what I'm doing.
Can you explain, can you explain again, dear Mr. Wean, interest allocated and interest unallocated?
So you have, the board has allocated interest to a number of projects. Off the top of my head, some of it went to the Family Shelter. We have put it to the broadband manager's salary, audit costs, those costs that are hard to predict. And again, if we don't budget it correctly, then, and we don't spend it all, we would pay it back. There were some interest put on to the county broadband facility project that came in a little over budget as we, we didn't have any FRF money to move at that point, so we put interest on it. So those interest dollars are currently allocated to projects, the 2, 73,000. Then we have the 1.3 that we have not used. It's not on a project for the total earned to date of 3.4. What I'm suggesting is that we take the, the 300,000 out of what is currently unallocated. That would leave a balance in unallocated interest of just over a million. And we can absorb the need for the Family Shelter within the interest that you've already allocated to capital projects. I tried, I, I had so much more detail in the original and everybody's like, oh, you need to simplify this. And, but then I talk about it, it's, it's a lot of moving parts. So let me go back to the recommendation unless you have questions on any of the other slides.
Any more questions or discussion?
So by my, so by my count, this is not accurate, this is not down to the penny. But, so it looks like the request, the ask, is a re-obligation of about 1.5 million to the Family Shelter of what's currently allocated and then add on another 850,000 of interest.
So we... I don't even know.
I mean, if I, if I understand...
Why can't I go backwards? Oh, there we go.
You're talking...
Okay, so here we go. So the Family Shelter currently has 1.7. This was for design and construction in FRF money. And this is a mix between interest and actual FRF grant money. We also have other grants on the Family Shelter project. We have two other federal grants, so it's completely federally funded. So that's what, the current budget is 1.7. We are asking for an additional 851 in FRF funding, which should make the project whole. And it includes some contingency money, which we may or may not spend. And that would be, we're going to keep that in interest so that it could come back to the county if it is not spent. Did that answer your question?
So the 851,000, where's that coming from?
The transfers from other projects.
So that's, that's actually the transfer. Because I came up with more money, so I was trying to figure out exactly where all that money was coming from.
600 from broadband, the 100 from planning and land management, and then the contingency interest.
Roberto knows this as well as I do.
The reason, the reason I'm asking these questions is because it's my view that we should be returning every penny we can to the general fund. And if it means reorganizing priorities with the over $32 million of FRF award we already have, we should need to do that because that's the situation we're in as a county with our budget. And I think when you were with us early in the spring, I, I mentioned the same thing. That before, if, if we want to talk about spending money or reallocating money, that's what we do during the budget process. Right now, I'd like to see as much money as possible go to the general fund. And that interest can go to the general fund. So that's why I'm asking the questions I'm asking, trying to make sure I understand where some of these dollars are coming from. I'm not trying to pick on any particular program. Family Shelter, I wouldn't, obviously, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to pick on anything like that. Long Driveway Program, I understand the importance of that as well. But that's why I'm asking these questions because I, we need to make those budget decisions during the budget process. And we don't even know how bad it's going to be yet. And maybe it's not going to be as bad as we think it is. But that's the flexibility I think we want to have later and not use that money now.
But for this, as, and I tend to oversimplify, as long as you're reallocating interest, we, the outlook on list is return zero to the federal government, return anything left over to our general fund.
Correct.
And the only thing that can go to general fund is interest income.
Yes.
Exactly, and I, and I recognize that. And that's 3.4 million the way I see it here.
And that's why you're flipping some back and forth.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm talking about the 3.4 million. Obviously, yeah, that's, you made that clear.
Yes.
Just wanted to make sure.
And we're fortunate in that regard that we can actually do that. I mean, you mentioned, you alluded to the fact that that's kind of unusual. Having worked in the federal government myself, you know, at the end of the fiscal year, you either spend it or you give it back, which is a horrible way, of course, to do things. And that's why we have a $30 trillion deficit. But, so that's, that's why I'm asking the questions that I'm asking.
Yeah.
And I have, Mike, and now we've got the Budget Director here and he looks like he wants to tell me something.
He saved me last time and I told him he might have to come save me this time.
So I, I missed something as I was walking down the hall, so maybe what I say won't be necessary. I just wanted to point out, you know, we've committed to the projects that we committed to. We're not looking for anything new to do with this, this interest money. It's just getting us to the finish line on those, those projects. If we don't use the interest, then we're left with a question of, well, well, what do we do? And if you can't fully fund the project, then one answer is you don't do the project. And that's not where we are now. So I, I believe what Debbie and Celine have laid out for you, you know, is our best path right, right now. Let's use the money where we can, use it in a way that allows it to come back to us if it, if it doesn't get, get spent and make sure we fully use the federal money.
Further questions, discussion, motion?
I move the Board of Commissioners' exec recommendations for the FRF and interest funds.
A second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
And because of the screen, we can't see Commissioner Vugliotti.
Let me try to fix that.
So can you go verbal and just say you are for?
Yes, I was in favor of it. And my thought on it is that if we don't allocate FRF money for these projects, it's going to come out of the, the budget anyway. So we might as well use federal money to plug the gap, so to speak, than to have to rely on local taxpayer dollars to do it. That, that was my thinking on it.
Okay, I just wanted to verify. Either way, it would have been 3-2 or 4-1, but it's 4-1. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Good explanation. Now, the Family Shelter.
For which we have funding.
Yes, now that we have money.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
The Office of Procurement and Cooperation with the Bureau of Building Construction and Department of Citizen Services requested statements of qualification for the renovation of the Family Shelter at the Cove located at 115 Stoner Avenue in Westminster. The Office of Procurement received six statements of qualifications, which, of, of which three were shortlisted and issued a request for proposal. An evaluation committee was formed to conduct a technical and financial review of the proposal submitted. They can ensure approval to award a contract for the renovations of the Family Shelter at the Cove to Lewis Contractors an amount of $2,967,350. This amount is within the approved budget.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kirk Engel, Project Manager with Bureau of Building Construction. I would like to give you a brief recap.
Sure, I've met most of you. I'm the new Bureau Chief for Building Construction, Kaylee House.
Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you.
Good to see you again.
Just making sure. Thank you.
All right. Yeah, we're good.
Start again.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners. I would like to give you a brief recap of the project. The Bureau of Building Construction has been collaborating with the Department of Citizen Services for the design and construction of a new family shelter space at the Cove building located at 115 Stoner Avenue in Westminster. The purpose of this project will be to transform a portion of the occupied building into a family shelter to provide space for individual families, to accommodate up to 10 families, and to incorporate private rooms and bathrooms as well as emergency bed space. The scope of work shall include selective demolition and partial renovation of approximately 7,500 square, square feet of the existing building to be used as a new family shelter. Anticipated start date for mobilization and construction is March of 2025. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
So Lewis's contract does not include the design. That's already happened.
Correct.
So A and E is already done? This is the actual construction?
Correct.
Was there a big difference between the three? I mean, as far as the construction? Or did they all meet the calls and...
Actually, Lewis was the highest rank, they all saw the lowest bid. The highest we received was a difference of $170,650. And then the difference between the second and third was only $27,000.
Wow.
So they were very close.
They were really hitting the, hitting the target pretty well.
Yes, they did.
That's great. Okay.
I move the Board of Commissioners award the contract for renovations of the Family Shelter at the Cove to Lewis Contractors in the amount of $2,967,350.
I have a motion?
I'll second it. Is it actually renovations or is it development, construction?
Well, it's a little, it's a little bit of both because there's a...
Oh, that's right, because the building's there.
Existing building already there. So basically, there, we're gutting it, doing some demo, and then obviously constructing it for the purposes of the, of the Family Shelter.
But you're not, you're using the existing building?
Yes, sir.
Got it.
Just a general question. Across from the, across from the Westminster Senior Center, there is a, there's a service being operated out of the building across the parking lot. What exactly is that? Is that a, is that the town? That's, I, yeah, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, Ms. Snuggel.
Are you talking about the, the White House, the Target building? Or are you talking about the senior living Timber Ridge apartment complex?
Is that, is that the Timber Ridge apartment complex?
That is Timber Ridge.
That they share the same parking lot with the Senior Center?
No, we have a shelter, the, the adult-only shelter. There's a white, a one-story building that's in the same parking lot. That's, that is the adult-only shelter and the night-by-night shelter that is run out of that building on two separate sides.
Okay, okay, thanks. Thanks for clarifying.
Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank y'all, have a good day.
So now a request to proceed to a public hearing for the Financial Assurance Plan.
Oh, that's not us. There we go. Good morning, Commissioners. So this is actually the, the third time that I've presented this week on Stormwater Management and NPDS. So it warms my heart that I'm spreading the knowledge of such an important topic.
My favorite topic.
So we are here today to talk about our NPDS permit and what's called a Financial Assurance Plan. And I'll explain what that's all about. So we've been before you several times to give you briefings about the NPDS permit and explain why we have the permit, what we're trying to accomplish and so on. But I'll give just a quick recap to bring everybody up to speed. So the NPDS, which stands for National Pollution Discharge Elimination System Permit Program, came out of the Federal Clean Water Act in the early 1970s. And what that, what that, the goal of that program is to improve the quality of waters around the nation. And the, the powers that were given to the EPA were to, to run this program and, and delegate authorities to state environmental agencies. So in our case, the Maryland Department of the Environment. And so the Maryland Department of the Environment can then issue permits to entities such as ourselves. And there are also other types of permits related to construction and, and point sources and so on. But we have a municipal permit and as do many of the counties in the state. So Carroll County, we're currently on our fifth generation permit. We've been doing this for almost 30 years now. And that permit requires a lot of different types of actions. Those include identifying the source of pollution, monitoring the quality of the water in the streams, various types of programs related to maintenance at our, like, publicly owned facilities like the Maintenance Center and so on, public outreach. And then there's a lot of infrastructure related to this. And so we have to perform maintenance associated with it. But the really big ticket item and the, the focus of, of the program and why we're here today relates to impervious restoration. And what that means is that there's a direct correlation between impervious area, so roadways, parking lots, buildings and so on, and the quality of the water that is in the streams that are immediately adjacent to it. And so the, the intent is to provide stormwater management facilities to clean that water before it gets into the streams and eventually into the bay. So I can't remember the exact year it was established, but I believe it was established during the O'Malley administration that there were concerns by municipalities such as ourselves on this unfunded mandate of having to all, do all this work. And so the solution by the state was to, to require municipalities such as ourselves to put in place a, a funding mechanism, a stormwater fee, which was also known as the rain tax, to fund these types of programs. Carroll County never implemented the rain tax. We have historically always budgeted appropriately from the general fund into, into the funds for this program. So we never actually implemented the, the rain tax. That, you probably remember, was, was kind of a political unpopular concept and it was repealed in 2015. However, when it was repealed, there were requirements that were put in place to all of the municipalities such as ourself. And that's this Financial Assurance Plan that we're talking about. And that was under Senate Bill 863 in 2015. And what that requires is that we report every two years to the state the funding that we are setting aside for this program. And the next steps then with MDE, what they do is, I'm sorry. So we first reported that, that information in July 1 of 2016 in response to that Senate bill. And then we're required to do it every two years after that. And what we're essentially doing is demonstrating that we have sufficient funding for the next two years to support our program. So in this case, we're talking about FY '25 and FY '26. And then the further requirement is that we hold a public hearing and we approve the FAP before our submission by the end of the calendar year. So what we're here today is to talk about the FAP and then we request permission from you all to set up a public hearing for December 5th and then your approval of the FAP so we can get that to MDE. And they can then take the next steps that are required by state law. Those requirements are that they have to publish that information. They then have 90 days to basically review it and, and ask us questions and make sure that we have enough funding for our program. And then they submit a report September 1 annually to the Governor and the General Assembly. So, just a brief tangent, I, I, you can ask the question, but I don't know the answer. Why we have to report funding that we're, we have sufficient funding for this program when this program, the permit, has penalties, both civil and criminal penalties from the federal government and the state government if we don't meet our permit requirements? That, to me, is enough incentive for us to do what we're required to do. Why we have to report that we also have the funding, I don't have the answer to that. So if you were wondering, I'm sorry, I don't have that.
So there's no carrot and stick, there's just a stick?
Exactly, a couple of sticks.
What's the difference between SB 863 and the rain tax, except for the name?
So the, I don't know what the legislation was that created the rain tax. And that was previous too. But, so there was legislation that created it. And then SB 863 was the one that repealed it.
Right. But, I mean, nobody likes to hear the term rain tax, just like there's other words nobody likes to hear when they're put together.
Yes.
But if the requirement, you know, is still there... But if the requirement, you know, is still there, just under another name?
Well, so the...
And that's my question is, is SB 863 still requiring us to do certain things? And again, there's no carrot but a stick, then?
So the rain tax legislation that passed before this, that was repealed. What that did is it required jurisdictions to establish that rain tax, so to establish a separate fee, and there was guidance on how to collect that and so on. Some jurisdictions, they essentially implemented a $1 per property and so on, tried to make it go away that way. Here in Carroll County, we were able to argue that we did not need to implement anything because we had sufficient funds going from the General Fund into the program. Other jurisdictions did actually implement a rain tax, and I don't know if they are still doing so or not. But Senate Bill 863 repealed the requirement to have that.
Right.
Now all we have to do all is report that we have sufficient funding. How we get that funding, that's what we have to describe in the financial assurance plan.
Okay.
So it's sort of repealed part of it?
Yeah. Okay, so as I was saying, the primary permit requirement that we're addressing is the restoration of impervious surface. And so their terminology is impervious surface restoration program, or ISRP, and you'll see that through some of the state requirements. And what this means is that we need to provide treatment to currently untreated impervious. So if there's a parking lot that was built before current stormwater regulations, for example, it does not have any treatment going to the waterway. We're supposed to treat a certain amount of that around the county. When we established our baseline back several years ago, we calculated that we had just over 8,000 acres of untreated impervious around the county. So that's the big total number, 8,000. Over the years and through our permits, we're chipping away at that. These permits will probably never stop. We've been doing them for the past 30 years, and they'll probably continue for the next 30 years. So our current permit, which is the fifth-generation permit, will expire in December of '27. And our requirement for this fifth-generation permit is that we're required to treat 1,217 acres of existing impervious. So how do we do that? So we implement what are called best management practices, or BMPs. The simple way to think of these and the simple solution are what we consider traditional structural practices. And these are like wet ponds, like the Westminster Community Pond, which the background image of the slide, that's a picture of, or dry ponds, such as surface sand filters. We have one of those out at the Maintenance Center. And the benefit of these is that they directly treat the impervious. There's no arguing about whether the impervious is being treated, right? You drain the parking lot, it goes into this facility, it's treated, no question. Now, the average cost for one of these projects is between $30,000 and $60,000 in impervious acre. So you can imagine that these can be pretty expensive. We're doing considerable site work to build these facilities and treat that impervious area. I will note a couple of things. One thing to, that's a negative, as it were, is that that's driving these costs up, obviously cost of materials and so on that we've all experienced. But the other thing is that our program, as you would imagine, focused on the low-hanging fruit. We've done the easy projects. And so as we are continued to require to treat more and more existing impervious that's out there, the projects are becoming more and more difficult, which means the costs continue to go up. On the plus side, though, for us here in Carroll County, is that we have a lot of really good local contractors. And these are contractors that we've been working with for the past decade or so, and they know how to do these projects for us. They're here locally, so we get very, very good prices when we're constructing these things. There are other jurisdictions where this price per impervious acre is $75,000 an acre, $100,000 an acre. I've seen numbers as high as $300,000 in impervious acre. So it's a considerable cost. So yes, this sounds like a lot of money to me, but it's relatively speaking, we are doing very well. So those are the traditional structural practices. We have other types of practices called alternative BMPs. These do not directly treat the impervious area in a long-term structural-type practice. They treat the pollutants that we're trying to address, but in some cases, they're temporary. So the best example I can give is if our permit was to treat one acre of impervious, it was just one acre. We could build a facility for $30,000, $40,000 and then treat that and be done. Or we could buy a street sweeper, and we could sweep that impervious area and pick up all the nutrients and all the pollutants, but we would have to do that perpetually forever. Because as soon as you stop doing that street sweeping, you're then out of compliance because the pollutants then started accumulating, and you haven't met your permit requirements. That's, there are other jurisdictions that have focused that direction. The city of Baltimore, for example, they, obviously more urbanized area, the land is more expensive, building structural practices like we build, more expensive. They invest millions and millions of dollars every year doing street sweeping. But as soon as they stop doing that, if they were to cut that program, they would be out of compliance, and they would have to do something else immediately. So there are a variety of practices that are not these structural practices that we do. Now typically, they're often cheaper on an impervious area basis, but they're more volatile. The amount of credit we can get can change as science changes, as science figures out better what kind of credit you should have. And it's not necessarily permanent. So what our program does is, I think of it as a portfolio. There are a portfolio of things that we can do, from structural to alternative practices, that we put in place to meet our permit requirements. And we're trying to do it to be as fiscally conservative as we can to save taxpayer money, but we have to meet the permit requirements. So that's that balance that we're striking through our program. So the first piece of information that comes out of the FAP to present to you all relates to this specific section, which is what actions have we performed to date to meet our program? And so since January of 2020, we've constructed 15 structural practices that treat 460 acres. In total, though, since that time, we have implemented 276 BMPs, and we are taking credit for 1,081 acres at a cost of about $21.5 million. So that's been from January 2020 until today. So that's work that's been completed and progress. So actions to meet the remainder of our permit. The MDE asks us to look at the next two years, which is what we're talking about, right, for FY25 and FY26. We have plans that we will treat an additional 235 acres at a cost of approximately $13.7 million. And these are capital costs. MDE also asks to look, plan out for, out till FY29. Now, you'll note that that's beyond the end of our permit. But like I said, these permits will continue. Funny fact, it's written into our permit, we actually have to ask MDE for a permit. We're required by law to ask them for a permit, and then they go ahead and they're gracious enough to issue it to us. So we are required in '27 that we will have to ask MDE for the next permit, they'll issue it to us, and this will continue. So in this case, they're asking us to predict, looking out five years, how much we will accomplish. In this case, it's 584 acres is what we're planned at a cost of $29 million.
Out of the 276 BMPs accomplished to date?
Yes.
You have that broken down on these are the best of the BMPs, right? I mean, I would expect.
Oh, yes.
And then there's those that are identified as BMPs, best practices, but you're really not taken advantage of, or there's really no room to take advantage of here in the community, in the county. So we're not addressing, I mean, are you able to, in other words, kind of bring it down to, you know, these top 10 to now these top six where you're focusing on for the next?
So you're talking about looking forward for how we're going to accomplish the 235? So that's looking across the portfolio of all the different types of projects, right? So we've got a number of structural practices that we've got in design already and working on permitting and all of that. But then there are also things like the alternative practices, like tree planting. We budget every year for a certain amount of acreage of trees to be planted, and we get credit for that. And those haven't necessarily been planned, but financially, we've planned for them, and that will chip away at our requirement.
Is this addressed in the master plan?
No, this is not, the master plan identifies that this is something that needs to be done, that this is part of what the county has to do. But we don't go into a lot of details in the master plan regarding specifics like this.
No, but I mean, I think it's important that the community knows that we're good stewards.
Yes.
You know, through this process. And as we address the master plan for our future, for the next 10 years, this is our goals that are mandated, but also, you know, again, being the stewards that we are of the community, we want to accomplish, so.
Yeah, okay. So the one component of the master plan is the water resources element, which speaks to drinking water, sanitary sewer, and stormwater. And a key component of that element of the master plan does speak to the NPDS program and everything that we do and all of that, yes.
Okay, great.
Yeah. So if we're going to be good stewards of the tax dollars, we should be spending the least amount we have to for these programs because they're so expensive. So is that the case? Because again, next budget session, whether it's one-time funding, whether it's recurrent funding, this really represents more one-time funding. Is this conversation going to come up again?
Yes. So we look at it programmatically, though, with the knowledge that this is a program that's going to continue indefinitely, right? So these projects, especially these big capital projects that we're talking about, they can take, we've had projects take eight years from inception to in the ground. What gets really complicated there is that it can, that can cross multiple permits. And so our program needs to continue with the design and construction and so on at a reasonable pace, and that's what we do, is we manage the funds so that we are addressing current permit requirements and also anticipated permit requirements because we know they're coming. And there's no issue, if we do a little bit more with this permit, MDE absolutely allows you to take that credit in the next permit. So we're always trying to set ourselves up and not put us in a bad situation where a new permit starts, and we are hit with 1,200 acres that we have to do, and we're starting from ground zero and trying to ramp up and try and accomplish it all in five years because that would be impossible. So this is a rolling program that we continue, and we are doing as efficiently as possible, looking at both immediate and long-term costs.
And impervious acre, again, is that just a combination of a lot of different things? A parking lot, the roof of a building? I mean, all those things include impervious acres? And then you are able to sort of check those off, but the issue being there's additional acreage that needs to be mitigated, and then we're still, I mean, we're still building. We have to, you know, we do buildings, we have to do that, and parking lots, and that continuously adds to the total. So it's sort of a never-ending
Yes.
requirement, if you will, in that sense. Maybe at some point, you know, it starts to fall off.
So that's the requirement of current stormwater law. So any new buildings, any new parking lots have to meet stormwater regulations, so they get their treatment put in place as part of the development. What we're primarily focusing on here is all that historic impervious, 8,000 acres worth of it that's in Carroll County, that has no treatment at all, that we are chipping away at that 8,000 acres to improve the quality of the water in the streams in the bay.
Yeah, that was my follow-up was going to be, I'm sorry. The requirements of new development are that they have to include these. That was going to be my, which I was hoping was going to be the answer. So, sorry.
Build a new house, it's gotten, so that's a major part of your budget. I know people that are downsizing houses because they can't afford it.
Yes.
You, one of the alternative BMPs is tree planting.
Yes.
How do they look at, okay, you've got, and I don't like it all, blacktop and stone are all impervious, but what's, how do they look at the difference between trees and farmland or grass or whatever? And particularly, I'm wondering, I sold a lot and a guy built a house. He got burned for a lot of money on stormwater management, downsized, but he also has to do some reforestation. If PSEG comes into Carroll County and they're going to acquire 600 or 700 acres of easement, and a third of it's trees, they're going to take down 200 acres of trees. What do they need to do? It worries me with, again, the project shouldn't even happen, but if it does, we in theory could lose some tax revenue because the easements aren't worth what the property was. But also, I'm worried, if they have bases that are only eight-foot circles, they're not disturbing a lot, it's going to be hard to hold them to erosion control, stormwater management, and all that. But they have access roads and all that. But what about the, let's say, 200 acres of trees that are now going to be grass?
Yeah.
What's that do to us?
So a couple of things that you touched on there. So specifically to related to PSEG, state forest conservation law exempts those types of projects from having to address the forest conservation laws. Now, what the PSC may require of PSEG for doing this project, because there is such a huge impact, maybe they would put in place some requirements for mitigation of all that forest be removed. I don't know. That's a requirement that PSC could put in place, but strictly state law and our county code mimics that. That type of project is exempt from addressing forest conservation.
But we, Carroll County, has 200 less acres of trees?
Yes, yes. And that's, there's an issue there, absolutely. And they will have to address stormwater management. Runoff from a forested area is different than a grassed area. And so they will have to recognize that and analyze if there are implications related to stormwater management because of that change. Yes. So did I answer all your questions there then?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so what we've talked about so far are capital costs. The state tells us that we also have to address operating costs. So this is a table of operating costs for the past four years for our permit and then looking forward. A couple of notes. Operating costs includes debt service, and it's a large portion of the line that you see there for operating costs. Is debt service paying for projects that we have previously done? Another thing to note is that the capital costs include both maintenance and new construction. So there are, the county owns approximately 200 and some structural large ponds around the county. We're responsible for maintaining those. And sometimes maintenance has capital costs associated with it, and so that's wrapped into this line item. And then what gets a little confusing is that the capital costs shown here are the design and construction of projects aggregated to the year that the project is completed. So like I said, these projects can sometimes take upwards of eight years to get through the whole process. We're not tracking, and during that eight years, we're spending money the whole time, right, through design, permitting, and then construction. Construction sometimes could take a year. We aggregate that total cost and put it on the fiscal year where the project was complete, just to keep it clear in our process. So these are the costs that we anticipate, that we've expended in the first four years of the program, and we anticipate. It's on average roughly around $10 million average or so per year. That's both operating and capital.
Do you know why FY26 spikes a couple million?
Yes. So our, when we were coming to the end of our last permit,
Right.
there was a lot of activity to make sure that we would meet all of our requirements. And so we did a lot of construction during FY20. And actually, if I could note, we were pretty proud that we were able to get so much work done because with COVID, there was a lot of construction crews that were slowing down, and we were able to get more done and keep those local contractors working during that time. But what that did was, rather than, we would prefer a nice, smooth, do about the same amount of construction and so on, but it created a bubble in '20. So recent years, we have not been spending as much from a construction perspective. We've been doing We've been doing more design, and now we're getting to the point, and we anticipate in FY '26 that we're going to be doing a little bit more than, than kind of the average. So that bubble that was the end of the last permit created kind of this wave that we're trying to slowly even out. So the next thing that the state requests us to, to report is where does this funding come from? And we break that into three broad categories. The first line item, we just call cash. So this is essentially tax revenue, contributions from the municipalities because they are party to our permit, and actually developer contributions. So when we do a retrofit or restoration type, type project, if there is a developer that's doing development in that same area, and we can collaborate with them and help them address some of their stormwater management with our project, we will do so. And what they do then is then rather than pay and to design and construct it on their site, they, we negotiate a rate that they pay to us that we are taking care of some of their stormwater management requirements, and that gets paid to us in cash. So that first line item is made up of a variety of sources of, of, of cash. Debt service is, is taking, is bonds. And then the last line is grants. We've been very successful over the years in obtaining grant funding. Over the past more, a little more than 10 years, we've brought in more than $16 million worth of grants to help support our program. For this current permit from FY '21 to '24, it's $7.5 million to support our program. We have 1.5 that we'll be utilizing this year, and we already have a $1 million grant that we anticipate using in FY '26. So those are the sources of our revenue. Now, what you'll notice, and you'll see it on the next slide, is that the revenue exceeds the costs for the FY '21 through '24. And that's because the debt service, what we consider debt service is what, what we've been allocated, but we don't necessarily utilize. So it's been allocated to our program. You all have allocated a certain amount of, of debt service, but we don't necessarily use it all. So that's, that's why the, that's why the debt service will be higher than the costs. So that's shown on this slide here. And this is the primary thing that MDU will be looking at. It's kind of like the bottom line numbers that they'll be looking at. So looking to the past four years of our permit and then looking to '25 and '26, what our revenue is versus our costs. And they just want to make sure that we've got enough revenue to cover the costs. Now, you'll see in, in '26, for that particular year, the costs exceed, anticipated costs exceed the anticipated revenue. But that's because we will have debt service that'll be rolling from previous years that we, we continue to have, that we can then purchase those bonds, or sell those bonds, as it were, to, to cover those costs. So I can certainly go back to showing more numbers, but just to quickly wrap up, our next step, like I mentioned, was we're required by the state to have a public hearing. And we would like to hold that on December 5th. You can either close things out then and, and make a decision then, or we can keep the record open. But December 19th really is our drop-dead date for getting approval from you all because we need to make a submission to the state by the end of the year to meet our requirements. So, that's a lot.
They, they use the calendar year?
Yes, for the reporting of, of the NPS permits, yeah.
Interesting, with all that money in associated with getting things done, that they are not using the fiscal year, but.
So, so the, the numbers that we're pulling from are from the fiscal year, but they give us the six months to pull the reports together to deliver to them by the end of the calendar year, which coincides very closely with our permit
Right.
issuance date.
Okay.
Is there, is there a point in the future that you're, you're sort of quote-unquote caught up on impervious acreage and, and just having to utilize alternative BMPs to, to meet requirements?
So in theory, yes. So if, if the practices we put in place are, are structural practices that actually treat the impervious, right? We could at some point in the future treat all of the existing impervious that's out there. With the allowance of alternative practices, what's nice about them is they're less expensive, right? But they're not actually treating any impervious. So there's a hypothetical situation where by your permit, all of your impervious is treated, but physically out there in the world, there's impervious that's not treated. And what I would suspect is if you ever hit that point, MDU could say, great, we really appreciate all the alternative practices you put in place, but you still have these, this physical impervious that's not, now start treating that.
There's like 100% chance that that's what happens.
Exactly, but that's 50 years in the future, and hopefully, none of us are having to, to deal with that.
Yeah, again, it's, I agree. I mean, there's a lot of sticks out there. But there's really no carrot in accomplishing this.
Yes.
So, yeah.
Now, what I will say is that we are constantly searching for the carrots, if that makes sense. From the perspective of, we look for co-benefits when we do our projects. So we're dealing with stormwater. Now, stormwater is the treatment of the water, but there are drainage issues, which are not really our, our problem. It's more of a DPW issue, right? Of flooding and, and pipes that are not sized correctly, that needs maintenance, have maintenance problems, citizens who have complained about drainage issues. So whenever possible, we try and get as much benefit from doing these projects because the money's being invested. It's invested for this program. But if we can treat some drainage problems, if we can get, improve, repair some, some infrastructure while we're at it, we get as much bang for the buck. So there is a, a tangible benefit to other programs and citizens and the county above and beyond our program. We do that as much as possible.
Okay, I'll make the request that we go to a public hearing December 5th, 2024?
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Now, we're going to talk about exercise option to purchase for Angler Ag Land Preservation.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
It's good to have time before you today. We're here today for the final approval of a county program applicant, William and Patricia Hawn. They're both here with us today, sitting in the audience. Their farm is located at 3571 Heaven's Gate Drive in Westminster. The red outline is the property. Like I said, it's located at 3571 Heaven's Gates Drive in Westminster. The property consists of 64.83 acres, and we're retiring 14 lot rights with the property. Fair market value of the land only was $543,728.83 per county points-based appraisal. The cost to the county for the easement will be $380,610.18, which equates to $5,870.90 per acre, which is 70% of the fair market value. In the center of the picture is where the farm fits in with other ag-preserved properties. We do have the property directly north of this property preserved, and there's another one not shown, just to the east of Old Hanover Road, which is also preserved. So a picture of the horse pastures at the farm. This is a beautiful farm in Carroll County. And once again, we're here for final approval of the William and Patricia Hawn property at 3571 Heaven's Gate Drive in Westminster. 64.83 acres, retiring 14 lot rights, at a cost to the county of $380,610.18.
I move the Board of County Commissioners exercise, purchase, an option to purchase an easement on the William and Patricia Hawn property in the amount of $380,610.18.
Second. A motion, a second. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we ready to talk?
I just texted. I, I do not believe so. I just texted Jenny. I don't think we're, I don't think the bond sale is complete yet. Or all the, so we could go into all the open admin stuff.
So.
Oh, we have the, wait, we have, oh yeah, go to 14, sorry.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, go to 14, right.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll skip to 14 and come back to that. So item 14 is resolution to implement policy coordination with the federal agencies. Commissioner Vigliotti, this was your proposal. Do you want to talk first?
Sure, thank you very much. You know, again, I apologize for not being able to be there in person, but I felt that given the gravity of the situation we find ourselves in with the Maryland Piedmont Reliability Project, that I would, you know, make the effort to, to do this virtually. So, you know, a number of, of my fellow commissioners this morning have talked about opposition to, to the power lines, the Piedmont Reliability Project. And, you know, I want to say thank you to everybody for agreeing, first of all, to add this to this week's agenda. And the resolution that we're going to be considering this morning is for the invocation of coordination. It's something that we've all had some interested, some interest in, and we've discussed briefly before. And a number of our citizens have also suggested it as a potential course that we might pursue. So basically, coordination is a process provided for under various federal laws whereby a local government such as Carroll County may seek to compel the federal government or a federal entity such as the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission or PJM to meet, to discuss concerns, issues, problems, or negative implications from a federal policy or project such as the Maryland Piedmont Reliability Project, and to seek to address or resolve those issues. From my research and from what our county attorney, Tim Burke, shared with me, the process of coordination seems to have been employed successfully in some places and not in others. But for us, it's one more step that we can take in the protection of our citizens and our stand against the NPRP. And as I see it, there are three potential outcomes to invoking coordination. The first, the most optimistic but least likely, is that the federal government will agree to meet with us and alter or stop the project. The second is that the federal government meets with us but refuses to alter the project with respect to the concerns that we have about it. And third, the federal government ignores and/or refuses to meet with us at all. Now, if either of the second two options obtained, that they refuse to change anything or refuse to meet with us, I don't, I would argue that that still wouldn't be a failure or defeat because it would strengthen our case against the power lines when we go before the Maryland Public Service Commission as we'll be able to demonstrate all the attempts that we've made to oppose the project. And the unwillingness on the part of the federal government to meet with us in good faith or to respond to the local concerns increases the reasoning for rejecting the project's application when it comes to the PSC. And, you know, again, this is a very simple but crucial effort that we can make on behalf of our citizens in our county through invoking coordination. And again, no matter how it turns out, it will strengthen our case against the power lines in the long run. And if anybody has any questions or thoughts, I will do my best to, to answer those.
And, and this is also a public hearing, or is this, it says, conduct a public hearing on the proposed, we don't need to do that, correct?
No, you just, this is a proposed resolution that you're considering adopting at a public meeting.
Yes. And we, we talked a little bit about tweaking the wording, I think, about this, and the other one?
Two different things. The other one, there was no reference to the width in this one.
Does anybody have any idea? We need to submit it to the appropriate federal agency. Who are they?
I would imagine in this instance, it'd probably be the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. Unless Tim.
Yeah.
I will contact some of the opponents who've, who've engaged counsel in Washington DC for their advice on that before we send it out as well.
Okay, so we'll verify.
There's two actions going on. One is potential resolution that we can put in place regarding NPRP. Then there's this discussion that Commissioner Vigliotti is bringing up to create a coordination, you know, approach type of resolution. That's more of a blanket, like she said, a blanket statement. I'm concerned about that. First off, in the six years I've been here, nobody's ever approached me about doing something like this. So I'm not sure who or where this is coming from. If it's individuals, if it's large gatherings, I, I have no idea. But nobody's ever approached me about a blanket statement. You know, going after specific activities, I think strengthens our argument. And we can work to consolidate your, our engagements timely, in a timely manner, to go after a specific, you know, action like NPRP. And I think we are doing just that. Telling the federal government that it's a request for them to coordinate with us before taking action, I'm not sure the value in doing that, except that that's, I mean, we know who we are. We know how we govern our county. So I, I, I'm just not sure it's necessary to do a blanket statement invoking coordination. And if the catalyst is NPRP, I think we are doing other specific actions, which I appreciate, and that is going much more direct than this blanket statement. Like I said, I don't know, Commissioner Vigliotti, who's brought this to your attention. I've not heard this in the last, you know, time I've been here, so. That's.
So it, it was something that, that I was kind of vaguely familiar with, and Tim and I had talked about it some time ago, but also a number of citizens had, had suggested it. I think the first time in public that we, that it was suggested to us would have been at the public hearing that we had back in the summer at the Ag Center, when we had our own public hearing. And one of the citizens, or maybe two of them, suggested that this was a path that we could pursue. And then last week, I had requested that this would be on the agenda for this week, and I received unanimous consent of the members who were present to put it on the agenda for this week. And I, I wouldn't, I think this is a formal step, not so much a blanket statement, that we are, that I would, I would argue that we are going to attempt to pursue to either alter or stop the project before it gets to the Public Service Commission. And, you know, as I had mentioned, if the federal government says, no, we're not going to change anything, or no, we're not going to meet with you, then when we do go before the Public Service Commission, it strengthens our case because we're able to say to the Public Service Commission, we've attempted to invoke what rights we have under federal law to mitigate the damage from this project or to stop this project. And having been unsuccessful now, the imperative is with the PSC to step in to prevent the project from happening.
Yeah, I, I appreciate you bringing it up. I have no question about that, I have no concern. You know, you said a number of citizens, and then you said one or two, you know, at gathering, so.
The first time.
Yeah, I, like I said, I'm not aware of that. Actions that we take, I believe, are more, you know, are strengthened are strengthened when we are specific on a specific topic or action. That's why, you know, these, these direct letters and whatever we determine is appropriate for the next step, I think is, is more valuable than just, you know, having these type of blanket type of coordination, like you said, blanket statements or invoking coordination with federal government. That, that's all I'm, I'm saying, you know.
And I, I have heard from two or three.
Yeah.
People who have talked about this. And none of them, that's two or three out of 170,000. None of them knows how to do it or who to send it to. And I still don't think we're clear on that. So I truly believe this is one of the weakest things we're trying to do to stop this. But I don't know why we wouldn't. You know, this, this took our attorney's time, who doesn't cost us a penny, right?
Are we talking about the same, are we talking about the same thing?
And it's going to take some postage. So I think, I, I, I think it's, it can't hurt anything.
I, I think we're talking about two different things, aren't we?
No, well, this motion is only one thing.
Yeah, but what we talked about earlier.
That, that needs to be brought up in admin open later.
Yeah, okay.
That, that, yeah.
Because I like that.
Yeah.
Okay.
But, and, and I think, yeah, that's a little bit more strong. But, but I just feel like, you know, some people will say, why are you talking to Congressman so-and-so? They, they think climate change, they believe Al Gore, that we all died 20 years ago. Why are you talking to them? Well, it can't hurt. And, you know, so I think this is another, it can't hurt. Why, why not do it? And I think, and Commissioner Vigliotti and Mr. Burke, you guys have done a lot of work on it, a lot of research, and I appreciate it. And I just think it's one more thing we ought to try to do. And, and who knows? You know, it's, it might be the one that works.
Yeah, I, I want to thank Commissioner Vigliotti and Mr. Burke as well for all your work on this. We all, we have, we have at least gotten one email from citizens, all of us did, back in September regarding this particular issue. And I've, I've had a couple of emails and phone calls regarding it as well. But it was Commissioner Vigliotti who took the initiative to get it going. And with that said, I move the commissioners adopt the proposed resolution and submit it to the appropriate federal agency for action.
Second. So I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions?
Yeah, I'm still not clear. If we're talking about the same thing, or are we talking about two different actions?
We're talking about the resolution invoking coordination with the federal government, period.
I mean, I, okay, I, I thank Commissioner Vigliotti and Mr. Burke as well, I think. Absolutely do. But I, I don't want to, maybe if we did the other one first. I mean, I'm not sure what this does. And I'm not against doing something, but I am against, well, I heard from two or three, or one person, or three people, I got it, and a lot of them are the same. And I don't disagree with doing something, but I do disagree with putting ink on paper that's going to get us nowhere, or not get us to where we want to go. I mean, I, you know, when I take the arrow, arrow out of the quiver, I want to be able to, you know, to aim it. And I'm not sure where we're aiming this arrow right now. You know, except that it's, well, a proposed resolution submitted to the appropriate federal agency for action. I think we should at least find out who this proposed or appropriate federal agency for action is. It's not PJM, although I believe we should be targeting PJM. I don't know if it's the FERC. I don't know if it's, you know, our federal delegation, you know. I'd like to know who the appropriate federal agency is before we write a letter.
And, and I, I don't think we're going to figure that out completely. Again, I, I don't think, I don't think we've done anything so far that's a slam dunk that's going to stop this.
Yeah, I know.
And, and so again, I think this is worth it. I think in, in my private world, I would probably send this to PJM and FERC and copy Congress and Senate. I can't figure out who runs them. We have a board, maybe we send it to that board. I, I don't know, but I think, and I think we'll, we'll find that out.
The PRC has a governing board of commissioners.
Yes.
Right, so is the proposed resolution.
What elected official rules them? Nobody? You know, it's.
And you're, you're both right, you and Commissioner Rossine actually got very close to the difficulty that we find ourselves in. It's not that, you know, we're, you know, pulling an arrow out of the quiver to just shoot off somewhere. We're attempting to discern, you know, specifically who to address this to. But that, but that goes to the heart of the issue that we find ourselves in with the NPRP, right? When, when this got dropped on us, you know, none of these agencies came to us and said, here's the actual law statute and authority that we have to do this project. Everybody, you know, they all just kind of assumed, well, this is Carroll County, they're going to do what we tell them to do. You know, we're this federal entity, we're going to do this. And, you know, part of the problem with the federal government and all of its agencies and quasi-agencies is that there's such, there's such difficulty in determining who has what authority and ultimate responsibility. And that's why it is a little difficult for us sitting here today to figure, okay, well, we know we can send this specifically to this person. But as Commissioner Kyler noted, and as Mr. Burke noted, you know, we can certainly find out or go after the people we think would be recipients of this.
I agree.
And just one last quick thing. The other thing too is that, you know, again, even for the sake of argument, this, this doesn't get us anywhere, right? Or if the federal government ignores us and says no ultimately, right? That will strengthen our case before the Public Service Commission when we're able to demonstrate them that, look, we used this, we tried to invoke this process, that we legally have the right to pursue under federal law, and we were blown off. So it's not like we haven't attempted, as Commissioner Kyler said, to try everything that we have available to us. And we'll be able to demonstrate that we have taken these steps to try to, to resolve the situation.
So we all, so honestly, Joe, I, I agree with you. We already have that authority under the National Environmental Policy Act, like you described. My two questions are, one is, you know, sending it to the appropriate federal agencies, I'm not sure who that is. And then two, if we're sending something, should it be a resolution that we're sending, or should it be a letter? Are resolutions something that we send?
It's going to be, the resolution will be sent, along with a cover letter, to the appropriate agency, which I will present to the board in a week or two, once we have nailed down that.
So the resolution is not a resolution to be sent?
The resolution will.
Or, I apologize, let me, let me finish. The resolution is not something that is directed to an individual or an organization? It is a resolution from Carroll County, from the Board of County Commissioners stating X. The letter is, please see attached, X.
Yes.
Okay, and is the resolution the thing that we're going to be talking about? And, you know, that we talked about earlier? Because if it is, I'm all for it. If it's not, I don't, I don't understand why there's two separate.
It's not, it's two things.
Too separate.
This is specifically about coordination.
Yes.
But we already have that ability.
Well, there, there's a lot of people that say we don't.
Well, do we?
It's, it's worth doing. I think, again, you guys have done a lot of work on it. Do I think, and, and I'll be honest, PSC may laugh at us for doing this. They, it may strengthen our case, it may weaken it, but I think we got to do it.
Well, I think to your, I think to both of your points. I mean, I appreciate all the time being put in by Commissioner Vigliotti and Mr. Burke. But I think, as we all know, and just putting this out there for the public, we're in uncharted waters. I mean, we've never had a situation on this kind of a level that was thrown at us as quickly as this was. You know, the, the comments that were made last week about how they don't need to go to planning and zoning, they can go around that. You know, the, you know, the heart of the matter when we really start looking at some of this is, it's like peeling back a giant onion. It's like layer by layer. And some of it really is completely counterintuitive to various laws and other statutes we have, you know. Do we have bog turtles near any of this? You know, there's things we can't do as a private citizen or other entities, be it business or otherwise, but it seems to go completely against all of those regs. I mean, we're talking about solar, and we're being told how you can't put an easement on an easement, but yet they're going to allow this easement on ag pres. So to me, I completely understand where Commissioner Rossine's coming from, but I think at, at the level of where we are at this point, I think anything we can do, and I would like it to be as targeted as possible, but I think anything we can do would be advisable.
So, okay, a couple of things, real quick. You know, we, we showed our appreciation to our state's attorney, Shoemaker. What he did was reiterate the law and remind the community, here is the law in place about trespassing, about things to do. I appreciate his reemphasizing of the law that already exists. He didn't create, I mean, which is great, because he's strengthening something. Is that what this resolution, is that the intent of this resolution to emphasize the law that's already in place through the National Environmental Policy Act?
This is some unplowed ground here in Maryland. It has been raised in several western states in a lot less nebulous situations. For example, you have the state of Montana, the, a lot of it is federal land. The federal government wants to put a highway through the state. The state or some municipalities raised the issue of coordination and said, you, you need to coordinate with us since you're going through our land, in effect, even though it's federal government with regard to this project. It's never been done in Maryland. This, this case is not as crystal clear as that because there's so many tentacles to this octopus with the PJM and the.
And the PSC, well, the PSENG is a private entity.
Understand.
And the PJM.
Yes.
Is quasi.
Yes.
So the National Environmental Policy Act focuses its attention on government encroachment on property.
Yes, so it would have to be the FERC or the Department of Energy. That's what we'll have to figure it out.
So that, I mean, the FERC comes under the Department of Energy. So therefore, if this is addressed to the Department of Energy, at least that gives me, okay, that makes sense. Again, I, I'm for this. I just want to ensure that we understand, you know, that we're not just putting pen to paper, saying, look at us, we're against NPRP. We're all against it. But, yeah, that's what I thought, that the National Environmental Policy Act is focused on something different, not here, right now, in Maryland, and not the way NPRP is laid out. Because NPRP is laid out through a contracted entity, which is PSENG, which they won from PJM. This is important dialogue to have because, again, we're, you know, I don't want to say going rogue, I don't want us to put out more resolutions if it weakens the, the case that we're trying to achieve. Okay, so if you believe that through this, you're getting closer to Department of Energy or some entity, I would appreciate that, so. Does that make sense, Commissioner Vigliotti, where I'm coming from?
Oh, I certainly understand it, absolutely. And I think I would respond to just, one, not respond, but maybe help clarify the one point. I know you mentioned, Commissioner, that, well, you know, the law already exists. But I would make the case that in a situ, with this particular law, it isn't just like a passive law that's there where, you know, you actually have to resolve to invoke the law in order to try to apply the law. So, you know, it's sitting out there, but you have to take advantage of it. It's not just something that, that, you know, kind of manifests on its own. You know, if that was the case, then the way things should have happened is that some federal agency or entity would have come to have met with us in a public forum about this project when it was decided, however many years ago, that this was going to happen, when they decided to do this behind closed doors. So the resolution to invoke coordination, and that's the key word, is to invoke, invoke this right that we have under federal law, to push back, to say, you know, we really, we have to sit down and talk about this, that, that, you know, what you're attempting to do here under NEPA, you know, there are all these different issues. As Mr. Burke said, there are all these different tentacles that are kind of, you know, moving around. And again, for me anyways, in my mind, it strengthens our position with the PSC because, you know, when, when this, if this does come up before the PSC, then we're able to demonstrate that we've, we've invoked coordination, we've done what we can to try to stop this ourselves. And then we have to, you know, make the case that at that point, now it's up to the PSC to be the ones to say, this project is not for us.
Correct. My only issue was, how does it neatly fall under, like you said, NEPA or the National Environmental Policy Act? And it's, it's kind of, at this point, gray because the National Environmental Policy Act is intended and focused on large private properties where government comes in and has the intent of taking over large properties. That's not quite what's happening here because this is PJM and, but, but that's okay. I mean, maybe there needs to be another law that needs to be recognized. And I think that's where, you know, Senator West was also talking, putting more, you know, focus on legislation that this, that we do have more power because right now, we feel like we're being railroaded. Okay, I, I understand your intent, and I truly appreciate it, so.
Okay, are we ready to vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Are we ready to talk about bonds?
Not yet.
Oh, okay.
Sure.
Still not yet.
So we do have a caller online, so we can go ahead and do public comment.
Yes, sir. If the caller could use star six to unmute, you'll have three minutes. Please identify yourself.
Yes, good morning. Good morning, commissioners and staff. Catherine Adelaide, Carroll County Republican Central Committee. And on a, on a different note, and hopefully a really happy note to end all of this, we're one week before Turkey Day, so this will be my Thanksgiving address to the commissioners. And I want to begin with First Thessalonians 518, which says, "In everything, give thanks, for this is the will of God." Short, simple, very accurate. Even in our trials, we are to give thanks. I am first and foremost very thankful for God's grace upon America with the election of Donald J. Trump as our 47th president. And I hope you remember that every day as Republicans, whatever you're going through, that has brought so much hope to the election integrity system and just to our constitutional republic. I want to thank all of our county Republican clubs, Republican Women's Club of Tawnytown, Tri-District Republican Club, South Carroll Republican Club, and last but not least, the Republican Club of Carroll County. For all the volunteers and everybody who participated in this election, we're very, very grateful. All my fellow members of the Carroll County Republican Central Committee. And I want to thank you, the commissioners, and all of the hard-working government employees who serve the citizens of Carroll County. I also want to give thanks, and I'm very excited because we're having our MDGOP Fall Convention at the Weston BWI tomorrow, Friday, and Saturday. Registration will open, and then we have the State Executive Board Meeting at 6:00 PM tomorrow, 7:30, we have a VIP reception. Speakers will be US Senator Rick Scott and Congressman Scott Perry. There will be award ceremony, and we'll remember Diana Waterman, former MDGOP Chair, who. who passed away earlier this year. She was the Chair of the MFRW also. There will be music and dancing. We have great hospitality suites. I really want to personally invite each of you. The price for the VIP reception has been reduced to $120. I think it was $150. So you can still attend. They have hospitality suites, so you'll be well fed. On Saturday, we do the work of the MDGOP. There will be election of officers for Chair, three Vice Chairs, Secretary and Treasurer. I'm proud to report that two of our members, Scott Hollenbach and Rich Collins, will be vying for third Vice Chair. I wish them both well. We will also be passing resolutions, one in support of Israel, which is long overdue, but I'm very happy about that, and also one to support keep nine on the Supreme Court. So I really hope you'll be able to join us. This is a very special Fall Convention that we have. Election integrity, Carroll County certified their election on Friday, November 15. The state will certify on December 5. Our next meeting is December 5 as well. And last but not least, I would, as I often do, ask that the commissioners put out a public safety joint statement with the Sheriff's Office to drive sober this holiday, either on Tuesday or Wednesday. Thank you, Commissioner Rothstein, for keeping us on point about mental health during the holidays. I really appreciate that. And I want to wish you all a very happy Thanksgiving. I'm very grateful for all of you.
Thank you very much. Chris, do you have any other callers?
That's all I have, sir. Thank you.
Okay, and so now we're in admin open, and I think there's at least one more motion on one more resolution.
Yes. Mr. Burke, do you want to... Obviously, we discussed this last week, which was a resolution to formalize the board's opposition to this project as well as the use eminent domain.
Yes, as the commissioners have stated on numerous occasions, they are opposed to the NPRP for a myriad of reasons, one of which is eminent domain. At the last meeting, you asked me to put that in writing in the form of a resolution, and I've done that.
Okay. Now, we do understand they don't have the right to eminent domain yet.
Correct. It's merely a statement that you're opposed to the use.
Did you want to redo, I mean, how, I mean, yeah, because there's some really important...
No, absolutely. Just bear with me one second. Let me see if I can pull it up.
I have it.
You have a copy?
We did talk about modifying, describing the easement too specifically.
Okay.
And other than that, I'm okay.
We did take out the... Yes, okay. So the resolution would state, whereas the Pennsylvania, New Jersey, Maryland interconnect LLC PJM has proposed a 500,000-volt transmission line stretching approximately 70 miles through Baltimore, Carroll, and Frederick Counties, known as the Maryland Piedmont Reliability Project, NPRP. And PJM selected Public Service Energy Group, PSEG, an electric utility base in New Jersey as the public utility responsible for the planning, design, and construction of the NPRP, which will run from Peach Bottom Nuclear Power Plant in Pennsylvania, three miles north of the Maryland border along the Susquehanna River, through large swaths of land in Baltimore, Carroll, and Frederick Counties, and connect into the existing Dubes 500 KV substation in southern Frederick County. And the NPRP is largely driven by the electric needs of proposed data centers in northern Virginia. And it is evident that the Board of Commissioners that the current proposed NPRP alignment will negatively impact natural, impact natural, environmental, and heritage resources, local businesses in the hospitality and tourism sectors, historical sites, forested areas, and open space and conservation areas. And the proposed new 70-mile right-of-way with carve-up farms, some of which are subject to county and state agricultural preservation easements, severely disrupt agricultural operations, devalue farm values, and may result in the loss of numerous small farms that form the backbone of the agriculture industry in Carroll County. And at the joint listening session on NPRP held on August 22 of 2024, and the information session held November 13, 2024, Carroll County residents and others impacted, and Carroll County Farm Bureau representatives spoke eloquently and forcefully in the opposition to the NPRP and its potential devastating impacts on their properties. Permitting an NPRP alignment that creates the new right-of-way across preserved agricultural and conservation lands is anti-ethical to the purpose of the land preservation, namely to preserve...
Nice words.
Yes, it is. Preserve productive farmland and woodland, including prime and productive soils, to produce or to protect agricultural land and the woodlands as open space, to protect wildlife and wildlife habitats, to support a sustainable land base for natural resources, industries to protect the local waterways that lead to the Chesapeake Bay, to maintain agrarian view sheds, to provide outdoor recreation opportunities, and to protect historic farms and buildings. And in solidarity with the many concerned residents of Baltimore and Frederick County, that the impact by the NPRP, the commissioners desire to express their irrevocable support for this and residents and its opposition to NPRP as currently proposed, and advocates for a short and medium-term solution to Maryland's elected leaders could be better taken and serve both in the state's residence and its energy need now and therefore. Be it resolved that the Carroll County Commissioners of Carroll County, that the commissioners strongly oppose the NPRP due to its potential to harm Carroll County farms, wetland streams, homes and residents, as well as those of neighboring counties, and be it further resolved that Carroll County Commissioners encourage the Public Service Commission to reject the NPRP and deny any application for approval for the NPRP, and be it further resolved that the Carroll County Commissioners urge the Maryland Public Service Commission to uphold and protect the property rights of landowners and farmers pursuant to the Constitution of the United States and the Maryland Constitution and the laws of this state, and deny the use of eminent domain for the NPRP project. And be it further resolved that copies of this resolution shall be sent to the Governor of the state of Maryland, Carroll County's delegation to the General Assembly, the Maryland Public Service Commission, the Maryland Office for People's Council, and the Maryland Congressional delegation and U.S. Senate. And be it further resolved that the resolution shall take effect from the date of its passage by the Board of Carroll County Commissioners.
Very well read. Anti-ethical?
I like it. I like it.
Antithetical.
Antithetical is the word.
Oh.
Sorry, I was having contact issues today, and I'm trying to read out of one eye, so...
That's a toughie to read.
It was written by a lawyer, so you immediately assumed it's anti-ethical.
And it was incredibly expensive, but, you know. Should we add... Yeah, I'm absolutely for this. Should we add local governments, Baltimore County and Frederick County? We added Frederick County citizens or communities and Baltimore County. And then also sending it to everybody we sent it to. Should we also include Baltimore County and Frederick County? Those are the only two things.
Including what?
To ceasing, because we said we're sending it to the mayor, excuse me, the governor, and all these other folks, you know?
We're going to put it on the website.
Put it to the right and left of us.
But it doesn't say Baltimore and Frederick County.
No, it doesn't say, but we may want to because we've been engaging with them this entire time. Same thing with Baltimore. So you said that Baltimore County's done a resolution?
Yes.
And Frederick County's done letters?
Correct.
We've done letters. This will be a resolution. Yeah, I hate to say it's really well-written, but, you know.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second that we're going...
Wait, wait, wait. Do you want to amend it to add?
We want to amend it first.
Oh, I apologize.
Good point.
Or not, because I want to, yeah.
Good point.
So, can we... I will make the motion for accepting this referendum and including Baltimore County and Frederick County, where you have governments, and then ceasing Baltimore County, Frederick County.
A second.
So I don't understand...
Inside the meat of it...
What he's saying is there's one section where we mentioned the various organizations and government agencies and so forth, but we do not mention either Baltimore County or Frederick. And Commissioner Rothstein would like to include them, both just in the language, but then also that they would receive a copy.
I understand sending it. The language, I mean, Frederick County chose not to sign our letter. That's, should we just say other governments? Should we? I don't, I don't...
I mean, it's not a tit-for-tat. I just, I think, honestly, they missed an opportunity.
Oh, I agree. I agree.
But I'm still looking out for the community over there, and they missed the opportunity.
Well, so we have one motion now, right?
Correct.
I think, is that okay?
Yeah, the motion to...
Yeah, the motion to do this and add that.
And add that.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. And we have a second for that one motion. So any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Still nothing?
One, no, nothing for bond, but we do have one other thing for open admin, if I may.
Sure. We're going to, yes, we're going to amend that.
Anything else in open admin, think?
Yes, if I may ask Christie and Christine to come up for...
Oh, really?
Really?
Come on. Does this have to do with elves or something like that?
It might.
Why didn't you wear those up here?
Can't talk elves. You better put those things on.
We are. We're going to put them on.
Say, you guys can wear your little costume.
And you're on camera.
Good morning. So realizing we're not here next Thursday because of Thanksgiving, and we wanted to invite the community out to the annual holiday lighting on Tuesday, December 3, doing things a little bit differently this year. And festivities will start at 5 o'clock. Rumor has it Santa will be coming in, riding in on a fire truck. And then the lightings of the tree in menorah and remarks will start at 5:30. We're looking forward to it. We have some of our very own county employees providing music and performing that evening.
Yeah, just some other activities. All of the directors for the county under your jurisdiction will be there. And rumor also has that they may be dressed like elves, a little bit further than what we're wearing. But just trying to make this a really fun event, encouraging our employees to attend. We'll have some activities for the kids and things like that, so we're really looking forward to it. Hot chocolate and cookies, so that should certainly draw a crowd, but just looking for a fun night. So Christine and I are just here to promote it and invite the public, as well as our employees, friends, and families to attend. We look forward to elfing around with them that night.
And a quick shout out to Jeannie Bird Banky Company, who is donating the hot chocolate for the evening.
Awesome.
So are you having music?
Elferious.
Elferious, there they are.
Just share with you one of my happiest memories from a while back. When I ran the installation, when I ran Ford Mead, we did a big Christmas tree lighting. And we had a power switch to light up the tree. And I had all these kids on top of me to push, because everybody wanted to touch that lever. And we pushed the lever, and we all had candles, and we sang Silent Night. The comical thing to me was my public affairs guy, Chad, you know, put all this together. I said, Chad, what do you think? A Jew and a Muslim singing Silent Night all together with all these folks. It was awesome. And it was all about community, and we just had so much fun. So I appreciate taking this another step further than what we have been doing because it's pretty special when you can bring community together like this. So thank you.
The other thing we want to mention is that we are doing a food drive for Carroll Food Sunday. That information will be coming out for staff and the locations here for our staff to donate. But we also want to open it up that night and encourage everyone to bring something for them as well.
Cool.
That's it.
Well, that's a great flyer. So is that going to be, I'm sure you're going to get that up on Facebook or something like that, so we can also share it. And yeah, thanks for putting this together. This was something that a few of us, I think, specifically, were hoping for, that maybe we could, you know, do more if we could during the lighting, and that's what we're doing. So appreciate it. Thanks.
Anybody want to wear our headbands for the bond meeting?
I'm excited inside.
I can tell. About the bond meeting or the elves?
Both.
Both.
Better, you'll go on the naughty list if you don't act like you're excited.
Any other items for admin open?
Thank you for the indulgence.
Okay, agenda review.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Okay, Thanksgiving week looks empty. Commissioner Garen has the podcast. There is a Mako Solar team meeting on Wednesday?
Yeah, I think it is Wednesday.
On Tuesday?
Tuesday.
On Tuesday. So that's...
You're right, Tuesday, 1:00 PM.
One to one.
Yeah, one to two.
1:00 PM on Tuesday.
Correct.
And other than that, it's nothing that would be public. It's cabinet meeting, it's staff retirement, it's Thanksgiving.
And the solar, Commissioner Kyler and I, and whoever else wants to participate, it is a teams meeting, so we don't necessarily have to be here, but...
Anything else for that week?
You may want to mention that the county offices and services are closed, both Thanksgiving and Friday.
The county office is closed Thursday and Friday, and Saturday and Sunday.
Check the Northern landfill schedule.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It will be open some of those days, not Thursday.
Okay. Monday, December 2, no activities. Tuesday, December 3, joint meeting with county commissioners and McDaniel's staff at 8:30 AM.
That's not, that's the 10th.
3:00 PM.
Yeah, hold on.
That's the 10th.
Sorry.
That's not true. The Westminster or McDaniel, that's the following week.
Yeah, that's the 10th.
That's the 10th.
So take off McDaniel. That's not correct. Boys and Girls Club Polar Dunk Tank at 3:00 PM. Commissioner Gordon and Commissioner Kyler. 4:30, the Farm Museum Holiday Open House. And then, is it 5:00 or 5:30?
So it starts at, the whole festivity starts at 5:00. More portion specifically, the speechifying, as State's Attorney Haven Shoemaker would say, is 5:30.
And then on Wednesday, the Good Scout Award Breakfast honoring Todd Herring, Commissioner Gordon. Planning and zoning commission is 6:00 PM, Commissioner Gordon. On Thursday, 8:00 AM, close admin. 9:00 AM, open session. Party Carroll is honoring Becky Unglesby retirement from the Comptroller's Office. Presentation of auditor financials, budget adjustment for Carroll County Public Schools, CIP budget transfer for Carroll County Public Schools, financial assurance required by Maryland Environmental Article, Melstone Valley Stormwater Management retrofit, application and acceptance award Carroll County Tree Plannings, Hampstead Valley Forest Stormwater Restoration, Solar Energy Generating Systems, Proposed Amendments to Chapter 158 Housing, Zoning Waiver for Westminster Annexation, Comment Letter for Westminster Annexation, Development Rights and Responsibilities. And that's for approval. That's been through the process, I think. Correct?
The annexation? The annexation you're asking about?
And CTS Safety Management?
No, this is the first, this is the first time you've heard this one.
Okay. Oh, this, so this is...
This is another one.
Okay.
Yeah, because the last time you did it all one and done.
Yes.
Yeah, because last time you, you did it all one and done. So this is another one.
CTS Safety Management Plan. Approval to purchase tilting skillet, braising pan and equipment for the sheriff. Approval to purchase equipment for two new ambulances. Contract renewal for Center for Internet Security. Contract award for pipe covert and storm drain rehabilitation, 80-F-2. Roberts Rules and Meeting Procedures. Public comment. Approval of closed minutes, out admin open, approval of closed minutes, agenda review. The tree lighting ceremony for VIP is 6:00 PM. Catherine's Cause is 7:00 PM. And on Friday, the Carroll County Realtors Legislative Lunchman, Commissioner Kyler.
Wanda, please add me to that one.
Boys and Girls Club Holiday Party with Santa, Commissioner Gordon. State's Attorney Annual Holiday Gathering, Commissioners Kyler and Ralstein. On Saturday, Toys for Tots, Commissioner Gordon. And the podcast is Commissioner Ralstein.
So.
So we, we're still waiting. So we, we need to adjourn?
No, we need to recess. If we're gonna recess, then we're gonna come back into open to do that. And then we have a closed for potential litigation after. So.
So once, right now, we're just gonna recess.
We need a motion to recess.
Then we'll go to close. So I need a, I need a motion to recess our open session.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We're back in open session. And we're ready for item 13, consideration of bond sale award resolution.
I guess I can't say good morning now. I have to say good afternoon. With me is Emily Fustig from our bond counsel and Jennifer Derrickson. And we have Joe Mason back here in the back from our financial advisor firm. So we are before you today to provide the bid results and actions necessary to complete the county's annual bond sale. As well as we also have bond, our bid results for our taxable bond issue that was for the Hampstead Volunteer Fire Company. So first, I'd like to say we're very pleased with the results that we're sharing with you. And of course, we received our reaffirmation of our triple AAA from the credit rating. So that was very successful again. The tax issue, tax exempt issue that we did receive 14 bids in, which is very, a lot of bids. And then with the winning bid was at 3.43%. That is actually down from last year.
I'm sorry, what was the winning?
3.43. I can extend the numbers out if you want to, but I just rounded it to.
And will we get that or will the public see that? The bid results?
We can put them online if you would like us to put them online, absolutely. It's public knowledge. But it is down from last year's winning bid of 3.63. And then the year before that was 3.79.
I was gonna say, last year was pretty amazing too.
Yeah, so.
Down from that.
Down from two years ago. So the $30 million of general obligation bonds are scheduled for, to fund a lot of the capital projects in the public schools, govern, general government, stormwater, public works. And the winner was USB, or USB, UBS, sorry. The taxable issue that we advertised as well received five bids. And the winning bid was 4.88%. That'll be passed to the fire company for the taxable bonds. And Piper Sandler was the winning.
When is the last time we had a taxable one? It's not, not for a few years.
Well, we did a taxable refunding. It was in 2020.
2020, correct.
That was a refunding.
Yes.
That was a, yeah.
So is 4.88 good?
Yes, very good. Yep, and it was below.
We don't have anything to compare it to for us.
Yeah, no. And both the, the rates that you got on your tax exempt and your taxable today were under the estimates that we had. So you did better than what we thought you were going to do going into today.
So that's either not good on you or really good on us.
True, very much so.
That's awesome.
Well, do you want today to be cheerful? You, you don't want it to be over your, you don't want it to be other way, right? Yeah.
I'll turn it over to Emily and Jen to.
Yes, good afternoon, commissioners. Thank you for having us before you. And just to reiterate, I think these rates show the really great effort the county puts in. And you have a wonderful team here. So we appreciate working with you. I know my colleague Dave Gregory was here about a month, a month and a half ago with Ms. Hobbs presenting the initial resolution. And what that was is it gave the authorization to go out to the market, to publish a preliminary official statement, and then to come back here to you all to report the results. So the resolution that's before you today is the reporting back of those results, which Ms. Hobbs has summarized for you all. So here today, you'll see in this, in your packet, the resolution that gives you the list of the bidders and their bids for both the tax exempt and taxable bonds. It has the winning bidders and then it also has the, the rate and par amount schedules at the end. So we will be looking to get this approved today. And then we would, within the next two weeks, just be finalizing all of the documents for the closing and the market. And I will be back here with you all early December to sign documents for the bonds to fund on December 5th. Any questions? Great.
Ms. Hobbs covered most of the information about the bond sale today. But I just wanted to reiterate, obviously, you received great rates on both series. In terms of it being a market rate, you know, the difference between UBS at 3.43 and the, the highest bid was only about five basis points. So a very close bid on that. Same on the taxable series as well. So, you know, your reaffirmation of the AAA ratings really did help with the rates that you received today.
Now we need a motion, right?
More questions, discussion, a motion?